Take a morning when you walk in, take a nap.
Sorry.
Don't push up to me.
I'm with you. I'm still in motion.
They were cracking the process, they were cracking the process.
Anybody?
My, I might, yeah, my, I don't know. For example. Uh, do, for, for, this stuff. Perhaps. Ever? I'm going.
The speaker. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Whistle.
Hmm. I think. The last. The last. Name it.
I have talked to PJ. PJ said, oh, yeah, oh, hello. PJ, yeah, yeah. But PJ and I were working on that.
Okay.
And then what happened is we, we did that roundtable, we called the roundtable and stuff. You know, uh, but they wanted it, they sure.
Okay.
And so PJ was kind of an ivory on you, right? Uh, I don't want to go through what PJ was doing in 2008, but you know, I've, you know, put in the fire. So I'll work with you on it, wherever you want to go.
I, 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 I put, uh, Richard's, uh, notification.
I can get one.
Junior?
Yeah.
First ever time you?
I don't know. What? Oh. Homeland Security is under my authority right now, like in my shirt. There's someone at security, there's one more. Um, he's, uh, uh, just here, he's security, he's working on, uh, checking conference.
How much?
Yeah, and he's been, he's been looking more trips in the last 16 months than I ever would be looking for you.
Yes.
Uh.
What's he doing?
Certainly. But, uh, I'll do this issue personally, I'll tell you. Chuck Haney is the head of this issue.
Oh, what?
He had, well, he, 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 he broke your penis, but his penis slipped and it was actually inverted, which caused complication.
Inverted?
Yeah. It's not, it's not, it's not. The good thing is, he's, he's fighting issues. They have surgery, it's all, uh, you won't see him for nights long.
Okay.
Uh, so I saw him there, he released my, you know, but the thing was too, Chuck Haney was supposed to go away for a meeting with you. Okay? My concern is that when I was homeless, he was, Chuck Haney and I, always, there was always one of us on the side.
What's his?
This, this guy, he doesn't care.
Morning game.
Okay.
And Yankee. Which one do you are?
I don't know. Who was the next person? Who was the next item to turn? Whatever he said, okay, because there's nobody. But then, the whole issue is actually, uh, this, something else, uh, has been had, is he's taken and stabbed as a woman, that's a beauty, a woman, a person. Yeah. Well, basically, you know, from, from, from real vision, from the origin, that's just that we, okay? There's a good thing about it, the good thing is, you know, we've got, like, uh, but the national program is never designed, you know, uh, for operations or, gradually designed so that no more than 20% of your photographs go to, go to a person of, okay?
So other agencies are paying for these people?
No. Teach pain for these people. Where I, before what I did, see, this is why I did it before. I worked it out so that if I gave TPD one million dollars, okay, then they'll pay, then the way I look at it, they'll give me up, one person to work during that grant, three, okay? Well, not only that grant can show that grant, the monies are expended for other, but for other pockets, okay? So there wasn't even trade money, the one million dollars, you get this money. And I did it with the different agencies that way, and that's how I just got up, okay? And stay within my, 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 my 20%. But what happens is now this guy's decided he wants to build an empire. He builds, he builds his empire around a program that now, so you got 23 people, but it means this, you're not, you have less money than you need.
So it's patient.
Like.
But is that by any degree?
I think that, uh, there may be some question on, on the foundation, but more, more deal, and I think government, see, what's going to be very similar as with that, this is what the news, the one who's doing it, that we get 650,000 dollars a year, okay? I managed, when I was there, to ensure that Guam.
In a tire we.
So that where other places, it's 50/50 match.
Yeah, all of them sitting here.
See, 650,000, we would have had to.
Put on camera.
Wait for that, so we don't, so, but also that money's supposed to be used to run civil events, four personnel, four operations, okay? There's only three people. Okay, there are 11 slots that are there. Two concerns that I have, one first, when you go to the homeland, you have, next year's grants are open to be competitive, there's no formula, but it's, it's no longer, okay, you know, you got 30 billion dollars, everybody's going to get baseline, you can be, it's no longer like that.
All competition.
It's all competition. Really, we're going to compete against Texas, California, and other, other places.
Fires.
And then, then what's going to happen to those 23 personnel and those 20 other women, okay? We're not going to have that. They say, it's, it's not, it's not.
It's just him.
You know, the thing is.
Is he, do you know why?
No. I will not support it.
He retired, the National Guard, is that a devil on the, the?
Which one?
When he retired. Is that federal?
No, that's federal.
So he's not a devil.
It's not, it's a devil, yeah. But you're, you're.
What's he confirmed by the way?
I use another question, uh, we, uh, next year, because, you know, actually, I'm certain, if you look at it, if you have 60 or 50,000 dollars, you only manage to use 200,000. If you got some.
So what is your plan right now?
Well, I'm going to, first make sure that what I'm saying, who is running homeland security?
You're going to call your office?
Yeah, and then I'm going to let that, that, over to the, and ask, who's in charge? Who's in charge, because I see another process, homeland security, I think.
How can you?
We got to get that, thank God, the government, okay? I think we did the government a while, the problem, we only, a handful of us.
No, no problem.
Fortunately, right now, within the structure of your organization, right now, there is nobody on island that they are, that structure that has a policy. I'm concerned that, there's something with the, it's not, and you like, uh, this security, okay? To get guidance from the security officers or from the president. There's nobody, there's nobody that.
The Santa Teresa.
Yeah, yes, he has a policy. Here.
So what the hell's it done?
Well, that's why I want to, I don't know, I say, hey, look, you know, taking this to, down like. So, and I'll work with you on that.
That's why I want you to. Still. Well, I've always wondered about this, uh. How they count their money inside too.
Yeah, and you know, you can, a lot of, you go to the website, actually, you just, you can pull up, pull up all the different programs. And so, the good thing about, about the grants, it just, which I was, I was always looking for, is there's transparency, you didn't leave, here's the website, and what I'm saying, here's on the website, it's, and it's bad, you know, by, uh, constant, random products. Concerned though is that we haven't did products since I grew up. Fine, well, because we're, we're, our number has been, we were a lot of, they were, as a matter of fact, we were used as, you know, a lot of, a lot of, as required, they required us that within 45 days of receiving the monies, you have to spend, Judy, I'm going to spend 60 million dollars in 45 days.
Judy, no. Judy, get off that diet you're on, that's crazy. I don't, I think that's affecting also your, your.
Is that your, your? Yeah.
You know what, it's too much, too soon. Too much, too soon.
Yeah. And, and I see, the thing is, your, your, your system, and you got to remember, your, your body is not designed to save, as a real body, you need surgery.
But humans are carnivorous, they're not vegetarians.
But that's not what the church is.
Oh, forget the church, the church was wrong. What church?
That's because, that's what they had, they, they didn't have fire on barbecue.
Look at the caveman, they eat meat.
Okay, they didn't have fire in microwave, okay? They couldn't, they're meat, not going to get barbecue.
Which church, Seventh Day Adventist? How did you get sucked into that? Jesus.
Seventh Day Adventist? Is he quantum?
No. I just want to ask you a question, the daughter, whatever, in my.
Do you hold the mic, love?
No, that Judy made the motion.
No, that Judy made the motion.
Uh, two.
Four, six, eight, yes, we have nine.
It's okay, I'm immune now.
Hey, you got to go see my wife's lawn.
Why, do I need to go to the shop?
No, I was going to say.
What does she have?
Uh, what's her, and then, uh, that, uh, but, oh, I mean, just, yeah, they're arguing, she's got that. Like, like that's one of my, that's, that's. It's close by, you know, it's, 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 I want to just, I mean, she has. She was told to move it. Started that.
So what operation?
Actually, what? But I mean, that's what I said, yeah. Yeah.
I'm not doing, no, no, no. Oh, sorry, yeah, but I have to. That's, that's, that's. I can see.
Okay, guys, we're going to. Okay.
Ready, we're going in. I'm going to, I'm going to.
I'm going to, I'm going to organize, they just went up a lot.
Okay, uh, on the, on the, I asked, I can, can talk about, we spoke to, I don't think we have a, you are, yes.
I can argue that.
Now, when we ask on the, okay, the, uh, the, okay, there's, we, we, on the, we're thinking of a bill, and Ray was thinking, on the, last week, he was getting the word to cut on the whole amendment. Officer Lee says, and I talked to my, okay, I think, right? So now, I'm, I'm.
Can I ask the clerk to let us know if we do have a quorum?
Madam Speaker, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Uh, my understanding is that we are on Bill two, eight, two, and, uh, you took a short recess, recess, uh, to confer on a possible amendment, and I understand that, Senator Barnes, you do have an amendment to proffer?
Yes.
You are recognized, then?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sisus, um, for giving me the opportunity, uh, to speak, uh, on behalf of this Bill two eighty-two, uh, as of last night, there was some discussion in reference to the, um, possibilities of what could be included to enhance this, uh, section and to amend, uh, uh, I mean, to look at these sections that were proffered, uh, by the good author from, uh, PD, and in, in reference to the relative to the vacancies of the legislature, in the event there was a vacancy, and after, uh, full, uh, presentation by the author and, and, uh, by the previous speaker from, uh, GIGO, uh, I offered, uh, to work an amendment in, in reference to filling the, the vacancy within this body, and I'd like to proffer it right now, I've had, uh, all my colleagues receive a copy of that, and if I may, I'll just go ahead and proceed to that, Madam Speaker.
Does everybody, does everybody have a copy of the amendment? It's, uh, and that's for section two, I understand, right?
Right.
And this is the first one?
And the first, uh, uh, part of the amendment would be to replace section two of the bill to read, um, of course, section two, subsection thirteen, one oh four of chapter thirteen of title three, Guam code annotated is hereby amended to read. Election to fill the vacancy in the Guam Legislature, if a vacancy occurs in the Elestatura in Guam, the sixteenth place finisher in the general election for which the vacancy was initially filled, shall be appointed to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. If the sixteenth place finisher is ineligible, unwilling, or unable to, to be, or unable to be appointed, the Guam Election Commission shall call for a special election on the Saturday, on or be, on or about sixty days of the vacancy, of the vacancy, to fill vacancies in the Guam Legislature, whenever one or more of the vacancy occurs, yada, yada, and it just goes on to proceed. I'm sorry, it just goes on to proceed, Madam, Madam Speaker, if you want me to continue to read that paragraph, one or more vacancies occur, the vacancy, to, to fill the vacancies in the Guam Legislature, whenever one or more vacancies occurred therein, prior to eight months before the date of the next general election of members of the Guam Legislature, candidates must file their candidacy no later than thirty days prior to the special election. There shall be no primary election, the highest vote getter or vote getters, if there is more than one vacancy, shall be certified by the Guam Election Commission as elected and shall be administered, and shall be administered the off, of, of office immediately to fill the unexpired vacancy. Madam Speaker, um, just based on, on the presentation of the bill, and, and those of the, um, uh, community that were present, um, at the testimony, there was indeed a, a support for adding, uh, for, for, for saying that that sixteenth member be included, I mean, be, be appointed i- in the event that, uh, special, and, and the event that the fifteenth position needed to be vacant, but I'm saying to go a step further to enhance that, if the sixteenth person is unwilling, unable, uh, then I would like that, um, my colleagues support the effort of bringing it back to the people. I know there was, uh, discussion yesterday in, in, uh, reference to the, um, funding mechanism, and how much money is spent in reference to having these kind of special elections, and, and if I'm not mistaken, it was over a hundred and fifty thousand to, to, to that event, and a hundred and fifty thousand could literally, uh, uh, be used for other items, we talk about education, safety and health, and just the dire financial constraints that are happening within our community right now. I feel that this is a balance, and, and it brings that perspective back, that, the people, the will of the people, when voted, these were the. when voted, these were their top sixteenth spot. And if that fifteenth position needed to be filled in case of that vacancy, then this would be the option. And then the alternative is to bring it back to the people if that sixteenth person does not wish to fulfill or will be unable to fill. So I ask Madam Speaker that my colleagues give me that consideration and support the amendment. Sisus Maasi.
On, on the amendment?
No objection.
Okay, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speakers, you know, although my good senator from Talapago and my sister and I agree on great many things, I have to disagree with her on this one. On, I guess it's called the yada yada amendment. Madam Speaker, I recognize that, you know, during the elective process, the people of Guam are asked to choose fifteen individuals. And it's the top fifteen individuals that are chosen amongst the voters that move on to the legis, to the legislative, yes, it is on. I just have a low voice today. I'm sorry. I'll speak a little louder. And, but that being said too, ma'am, recognizing that, you know, at the end of the elective process, after the fifteen individuals have been chosen by the people of Guam, those are the fifteen people then that represent the people of Guam. Not the sixteenth, not the seventeenth, not the eighteenth. It's fifteen. And that there's an expectation, and I recognize that in our democracy, that should one, a vacancy be, should, should there be a vacancy, that this is a process that the people, we, we work for the people, so therefore the people then have to make, or make that decision. And so, you know, I guess with regards to my objection to this amendment is first off, I believe in the process that the people of Guam should be able to decide who then is going to be that person that's going to take, fulfill that unexpired term. There were a number of conversations that we had yesterday. As a matter of fact, a lot of it, I was joking with a good senator from, from PD this year. That's a lot of lauding for you. Because the people weren't wrong there. And I don't think the people are wrong when they elect their fifteen individuals. Some of us may not agree, but that's the democratic process. But that being said too as well, ma'am, one of the fundamental concerns that I have with, with regards to this amendment is if you were to take a simple scenario, is what happens if one vote, just one vote, separated fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth? How are we and who are we to decide that that one vote, that that one, you know, we offer it to the sixteenth and after the sixteenth, we then give it back to the electorate? If that were the process, if that were the thoughts, why didn't we just go down the line? That if the sixteenth didn't want it, then we ask the seventeenth. If the seventeenth didn't want it or wasn't unwilling, then we ask the eighteenth. You know, but that being said, again, I subscribe to the fundamental process that it is the voters that put us here. It is the voters that have elected us. It should be the voters that decide who is going to fill that unexpired term. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're, you're welcome, Senator Blas. Are there any speakers on the Barnes amendment? Would you like to close, Senator Barnes? Okay, Senator Guthers on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was at the hearing for this bill, and I remember the testimony that was presented. And there was support for this concept of the sixteenth person being tapped to fill a vacancy. In addition, Madam Chair, even our two newspapers had editorials suggesting something similar to this, which is very rare in Guam media. Now, I like the proposal of Senator Barnes because it provides a two-step process. Should the person that came in number sixteen not be able to serve to fill a vacancy or be incapacitated, then we go back to the election process. You know, it's interesting that when we had to have the special election this year, after it was done, there was an awful lot of public discussion with respect to it in terms of, you know, the costs involved, the distraction, the divisions. And the sense that I got from the community was that they wanted to find a better way to deal with vacancies in this legislature. Now, although a colleague has said that if you're not within the circle of fifteen, then you haven't gotten the imprimatur of the people of Guam. But I've always felt, and it's my opinion, that when anyone runs for public office, and particularly when they run for public office and receive thousands of votes, although they may not be successful enough to move into the magic circle of fifteen, they have shown that they have some acceptability by this community. That people think that they would contribute to a better island and a better Guam. So I would never dismiss anyone that runs for public office, whether they win or not. They're stepping up to the plate. You know, we can use the presidential election that just occurred as an example. We had two outstanding teams of candidates running for president and vice president of the United States, and either team could have served our country well. I recognize, Madam Speaker, the powerful experience and history and contributions of Senator McCain and Governor Palin from Alaska. These are accomplished individuals. And should they have won the position of president or vice president, I believe they would have served our country well. Just as President-elect Obama and Vice President like Biden will serve our country well. People do not rise to those levels of public service without magnificent support from their followers. And whether or not they win a particular election, they've proven that they do have the confidence of people in our country, and they should not be dismissed simply because they didn't win a seat. As a matter of fact, I believe that Senator McCain is going to be a force to reckon with in the US Senate because of his presidential run, and will be more influential than ever in the Senate. And I also believe that Governor Palin will have a great impact on our country, even though she didn't win as vice president. So I think the same thinking should be considered here, that if you're number sixteen, you were worthy to serve in the legislature. And I believe that Senator Tina Munya Barnes amendment is a good one, because it provides us these two options. First, if there's a vacancy, the sixteenth person is asked if they're available to serve to fill that vacancy, so we can speedily move forward in this legislature with the people's business. If that individual is not available because of other commitments, then we go to the election process. So I support the amendment. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Guthers. Are there any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Tenorio?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the amendment. Madam Speaker, I do have a question with regards to the third line, which says shall be appointed with regards to this. And of course, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues with regards to concerns on this particular amendment. Who does the appointing?
What's the?
Shall be appointed to fill the vacancy. Who does it?
The mover of this amendment. Would you like to respond? Do you yield?
It would be the chief executive, which is the governor.
Okay. Thank you for the response. Well, clearly, I think then if the amendment is going to fly, it should carry that distinction. The Imago laehan Guam shall appoint, et cetera, and make the correct of language. And then the other thing is, there's only three hundred votes separating the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth vote getter in this election. That's a very thin, very slim margin. And of course, goes back to, if you follow the logic that the sixteenth person shall be appointed, why not the seventeenth, the eighteenth? We've seen the margins are so narrow, Madam Speaker. They're not a decisive jump of X number of thousands or anything like that. It's, it's a very thin margin. So why do we say the sixteen, not the seventeenth? And why do we decide to stop at that point? I mean, some of the, some of the arguments, as salient as they were put yesterday, still questions, you know, the value, relative value of the cost of democracy and why not a special election in the first place? If you can go to the sixteenth and say they don't want to, then go to a special election. Why don't you just allow a special election as it is already? That is the current system. The people have the voice. The people have the opportunity to choose. Why shouldn't they continue to do so? If the best man wins, the best woman wins, it should be the prerogative of the people based on those people who are vying for that vacancy. I think if we're going to be clear, if you're going to go down this road, then why do you stop at sixteen and not seventeen, not seventeen and eighteen? Notwithstanding my objections to that, this calls the question, there's such a thin margin of votes between sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth vote getter at three hundred, shouldn't this be something that is either inclusive of those individuals? Or, in the alternative, which is the current scenario, that the people get the option to choose who their next senator is going to be? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Tenorio. There being no other speakers, Senator Espodan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think during the last special election to, to fill the vacancy of the late Speaker Antonio Pincot, there was a lot of discussion within the community about whether that was really necessary. And at least from what I heard and from many of the discussions that I had with people on the streets and friends and constituents, they also were of the opinion that perhaps it would be easier to just move that sixteenth person up to fill that vacancy. And at the time, to tell you the truth, I thought that made sense. And I think, and I believe I haven't changed that position just yet. Now, with all due respect to the previous speakers who spoke about the margins of victory, or of, of the margins between the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth place vote getters who did not make it into the legislature, it's still a fact that even if the fifteenth vote, fifteenth place vote getter had a one vote lead over the sixteenth vote getter, the fifteenth vote getter is in. Or three, or six, or whatever that may be. But however narrow that margin, however narrow that margin is. And it seems to me also that since this is only a two-year term that we're talking about, and for the most part, again, we've only sees a few circumstances in which a vacancy has been created that needed to be filled for that particular term, it's only within a two-year period. And again, even Senator Cruz, who acknowledged earlier that he was one of those who, within less than a year's time, has had to run two elections, one for the special election and one for a regular election, it seems like there is a big cost associated with that for such a short term. I agree with Senator Guthers, who says, well, people who run put themselves out there, and they have proven to the people that, that is, that then who have gotten the vote, and especially that sixteen place, place finisher, right? They have put themselves out to the public. They just didn't garner enough votes to make the top fifteen. But it's almost like in, in most other activities, and I don't want to use a beauty pageant, because this is not a beauty pageant, but again, that, that's what comes to mind. Or even representatives to, to a national competition, say for example, if the person who was chosen to represent, say for example, somebody in a national competition, let's say a spelling bee, for example, cannot make it for some reason, then the next finisher is the one who is elevated to that spot to represent at, at that activity. And it seems logical to me that that would probably be a good course of action in this place. And again, the good senator's amendment does go on to say that if that sixteenth place finisher in this situation for the legislative seat is not eligible or available to, to fill that seat, then we turn to the election process, which again, some of my other colleagues have spoken on, that they believe that is the democratic way. But we can actually set the parameters. I mean, this is not one of those absolute things that we have to have in an election. This is actually a call that's going to be made right here. So I would imagine that this, in terms of the cost savings that it would be, I mean, if we're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, you know, for a very short period of time, in this case, let's take for example the one that just happened, it was for a period that was going to be for less than a year, and we spent a hundred thousand dollars, again, not taking into account what the candidates have spent to run. In the case of someone like Senator-elect Hala Titegwe, who ran in the previous general election and did not make it, and then ran for the special election and did not make it, I mean, the cost to that candidate was extremely high. Putting herself out there, you know, twice, raising the funds, getting out there. And, and even though she didn't make it, you have to, you know, credit her for the resolve in terms of what she, her passion was, in terms of serving the people. But anybody who runs in any legislative race puts themselves in that same position, spends that money, puts themselves out there. And I tell you, some of the hardest part about, for me at least, for running an election, is asking people for financial assistance. And so it seems to me that for such a period of time, you know, a two-year term, and usually it would probably be, you know, if there is a vacancy created, if we look at the past histories, it's going to be to fill a seat for, for a year or less. And so to move the sixteenth place finisher up, and if he's not eligible then to hold a special election, would make sense. And so I do stand in support of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Espodan. Senator B.J. Cruz?
Madam Speaker, I know this is going to sound strange, but I, I'm very pleased that you, your committee reported this bill out. I didn't expect that it was going to be as contentious as it has been. I'm not sure whether or not we'll just call the question, and if it doesn't make it down into the voting file, fine. If not, if, if we're going to spend another two hours on this, I'd much rather we just withdraw the bill. And let's move on to something of, I, I'd like to address JFK if I could today. I mean, I'm, I'm really concerned about what's happening at that school. And so I don't know what the pleasure of the body is, if we just vote on whether or not we move it down to the voting file as is, and if it doesn't make it, I can live with it. I'm...
Senator, yeah, let's, we, we have to have this amendment disposed of first, otherwise it will go down not in the, in the state that, the senator's wants.
Madam, Madam Speaker, I'll just call, I'll just close and call for the vote on the amendment, and then we'll work from there.
Okay, on, on the Senator Barnes amendment, which is then to replace Section 2 of the bill with what is provided. So on, on that amendment, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion failed. Senator B.J. Cruz, on the main bill.
Why don't I just ask that we move the, this bill back to committee? Why don't I just ask that we move this bill back to committee?
On the motion to refer it back to committee, no objections, ordered. Bill, we're back into the second reading file, and we're on Bill 327. Author of Bill 327, Senator Guthertz.
I know that all of us in this hall have been anxiously awaiting this measure to come forward for discussion and debate, Bill 327. And I prepared some remarks to try to expedite the discussion and to put the bill in perspective. You have a copy of the committee report, which documents everything that occurred during the hearing for this bill. And some of you know, because you were there, the hearing for this bill was about eight hours. And our good chairman of the committee, Senator Espaldon, acted with great professionalism in chairing the committee hearing. And I want to thank him for his due diligence in preparing the committee report and releasing it prior to the session. Madam Speaker and colleagues, Bill 327 establishes a policy for the government of Guam regarding special fishing rights for our indigenous people. There are two avenues of possible concern with reference to Bill 327. One is in regards to a misperception of endangerment to our marine preserves. And the other possible concern is that this bill may be considered unconstitutional to provide for special fishing rights for a particular group, thus violating the equal protection clause of the Constitution. In my remarks, I want to make it very clear, Madam Speaker and colleagues, that Bill 327 does not call for any negative impact on the integrity of our marine preserves on Guam. Also, it is not unconstitutional. Two lawyers representing our Attorney General visited me several months ago and told me that the bill as drafted was quote "doable" unquote, as long as we define who the indigenous people are and do not destroy or impact the marine preserves. Let me address the issue of the marine preserves first. It seems that many have misread the wording of the bill as introduced. And by the way, the committee report contains the original bill. It is not a substitute bill, it is the original bill. There is not a single word in Bill 327 about the marine preserves. It does not authorize any fishing in the marine preserves. It allows the Department of Agriculture to continue to have oversight over the marine Madam Speaker, I really fail to see how anyone could assume that this bill would lead to the loss of the marine preserves. Even the Pacific Daily News has printed two corrections for mistaken assumptions in their stories regarding this bill, that the marine preserves were threatened. They corrected themselves because after we reminded them that the marine preserves are not to be impacted by this bill, they recognized that they were wrong in the way they presented their editorials, and they corrected themselves. As a result of the public hearing that was held on Bill 327, I and my staff explored the positions held by the fishing community and the Department of Agriculture. We dealt with the fishing activist groups, we dealt with the members of the Fisherman's Co-op, and the Department of Agriculture. My staff and I developed four alternative bills covering the spectrum of the different perspectives presented by each group. However, after due and careful deliberation, I have determined that none of the alternative draft bills would be acceptable to all sides of the matter or to the members of this legislature because of deep divisions on the question of indigenous fishing issues. Therefore, I felt it was in the best interest of this community and this legislature to forward the original bill to the floor of the legislature. And I am pleased that the committee chair did so in the committee report. If any changes are to be made in the bill, they can be done during the floor debates here. The terms of the original bill, Madam Speaker, are very clear. The Department of Agriculture would be tasked to develop a program to implement the policy of recognizing special fishing rights for the indigenous people of Guam. The Department of Agriculture, therefore, has total control over the process should this bill become law. You can therefore rest assured that there would be no negative impact on the integrity of the marine preserves. For example, when the Department of Agriculture follows its standard procedures and sets the schedule to open the preserves for limited controlled fishing, the program developed by the Department of Agriculture could provide opportunities for our indigenous people to demonstrate their traditional fishing techniques and practices. If this example were to be followed, there would be minimal impact on the marine preserves. The bottom line, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is that under the wording of the original bill that is before you, the Department of Agriculture retains and has total control of the marine preserves and fishing throughout all the waters of our island. Further, the Department of Agricultural Program could call for an advisory committee comprised of indigenous fishermen in order to operationalize the intent of this bill. In so doing, then the intent of the bill can be realized. The other issue is that of the constitutionality of providing special rights for our indigenous people. I'd like to bring you back in history for a moment, having done this research. The original Organic Act of Guam had provisions providing for preferences for our indigenous people. In the original Organic Act of Guam, the wording was, "In making appointments and promotions in the government of Guam, preference should be given to qualified persons of Guamanian ancestry, with a view to ensuring the fullest participation by the Guamanians in the government of Guam. Opportunities for higher education and in-service training facilities shall be provided to qualified persons of Guamanian ancestry." The U.S. Congress approved that language, and the President of the United States signed it into law. No one challenged those provisions in the Organic Act. They were only deleted as part of the 1968 package of amendments that provided for an elected governor. Manuel Guerrero, our governor at that time, suggested the deletion, saying that he did not think the Chamoros needed any special preferences, since they were now sophisticated enough to hold their own in comparison with other folks. Imagine if those preferences were still in the Organic Act. It would provide a visual support for special rights for our indigenous people. Also, please don't forget, and I think our speaker will remember this well, that in 1977, the United States Congress and the United States President Jimmy Carter approved the draft Guam Constitution, which included a provision stating, quote, "Special rights for Chamoros to offshore fishing and harvesting of resources may be provided by law," unquote. Bill 327 is directly related to this provision, which was already approved by the Congress of the United States and the President as recently as 1977 in the Constitution draft Madam Speaker and colleagues, the 103-page legal brief regarding the Chamorro Land Trust Superior Court case written by Phillips Bordalio and the Trolahi Law Firm was upheld by then Superior Court Judge B.J. Cruz. This brief provides all the legal case analysis one could ever desire for determining the legal basis for preferential Chamorro rights. Finally, our Organic Act requires that every law passed by the Guam Legislature and signed by the governor of Guam be submitted to the Department of the Interior, which will forward it to the Congress of the United States, which can declare it null and void at any time. This is in the Organic Act of Guam today. If the Department of the Interior or the Congress of the United States does not think our law is constitutional, they can so inform us. Further, any citizen is free to challenge the Constitutional Court of any law. We should not be intimidated, Madam Speaker, in establishing just policies because of any fear of judicial or federal review, because that is part of the process. To take care of the suggestion of the Attorney General of Guam's office that we define what an indigenous person is in this bill, I checked current Guam law. There are two definitions that are already in Guam law that can be used as part of this bill, and later I will make an amendment to include one of them. The first definition is in regards to our future political status plebiscite. Title I GCA, Section 2102 defines native inhabitants as follows. Native inhabitants of Guam shall mean those persons who became U.S. citizens by virtue of the authority and enactment of the 1950 Organic Act of Guam and descendants of those persons. The other definition, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is found in the law regarding the Chamorro Land Trust. Title 21 GCA, Section 75101 has the following definition. When used in this title, the term "native Chamorro" means any person who became a U.S. citizen by virtue of the authority and enactment of the Organic Act of Guam or descendants of such persons. Madam Chairman, Madam Speaker and colleagues, the United States has a history of providing certain special rights to indigenous people, including the right to feed their families in traditional ways. By law, Native American tribes, American Samoans, Alaskan natives, including the Jewet, the Aleut, and the Yopik Eskimos, and Native Hawaiians have been granted certain rights that have been found to be constitutional. I believe we stand on solid ground. I would like to see the Department of Agriculture come forward, should Bill 327 become law, with a plan that provides the kind of balance that we seek and ensures that the ecological protection we all advocate is incorporated into their rules and regulations, along with the spirit of this bill. Madam Speaker, the Department of Agriculture should include one of the two definitions that I've just related to you on native inhabitants in its program. And to help them along, I will offer an amendment in a moment to include in Bill 327, to take care of the recommendation that came from the Attorney General's office. I believe that we should insert the political status plebiscite definition into the bill. The Guam Election Commission is now registering native inhabitants as defined above for the future political status plebiscite, and an individual's receipt of registration could be required by the Department of Agriculture in order for them to participate in the programs that the Department of Agriculture would develop as a result of this bill. Another suggestion would be for the Department of Agriculture to organize a program where our indigenous people could demonstrate traditional fishing techniques, so that it is carried on from generation to generation, and so that all the people of Guam can learn about these techniques. Once again, I have concluded that the original version of Bill 327 fully protects and acknowledges the work and leadership of the Department of Agriculture. I really, Madam Speaker, sincerely try to represent all the interests of the people of Guam in developing legislation. And I believe that this bill is a fair bill and should be given the support that I seek on behalf of those who would really find historical acknowledgement through action on this bill. Madam Speaker, I have an amendment I would like to offer, if you don't mind.
Do you have copies for every member?
Yes, I do. I'll just give them now. Let's see. One, two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. 10. 11. 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17. 18. 19. 20. 21. 22. 23. 24. 25. 26. 27. 28. 29. 30. 31. 32. 33. 34. 35. 36. 37. 38. 39. 40. 41. 42. 43. 44. 45. 46. 47. 48.[1789.24] office, and it would add a new sentence at the end of Section 2 to read, "The Chamorro people, the indigenous people of Guam, are defined in Title I GCA Section 2102 as 'Those persons who became U.S. citizens by virtue of the authority and enactment of the 1950 Organic Act of Guam and descendants of those persons.'" Madam Speaker, I offer this amendment as part of Bill 327, and I'd like to encourage my colleagues to please support the amendment and the bill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Guthers. On the amendment, are there any speakers? Are there any objections to the amendment?
No.
No objections? Therefore, it's ordered. On the main bill, Bill 327, are there any other speakers? Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm kind of torn and confused on this bill because it seems to be a great, great solution to a problem that doesn't exist and doesn't resolve the problem that some of our people know exists. So, I understand the preserves and the issue of the preserves and the theory and the practice of the preserves and why we want to be able to continue that practice so that we can have a policy in place that replenishes the stock. The issue of native fishing rights kind of surfaced because our native people were getting arrested for fishing in the preserves. And so, they came and they petitioned this body to have somebody come up with how do we stop our local people from fishing in our local waters? And the only place that they get arrested for fishing where they're not supposed to be fishing is in the preserves. Now, they may be arrested for fishing in areas outside of preserves if they violate the taking of any kind of species that are protected. And that happens whether you're in the preserves or outside of the preserves. So, everybody gets arrested for taking certain types of species, certain sizes, et cetera. That is not allowed to be taken by law outside of the preserves where the most rules are in the preserves. And there is a total ban on fishing with the exception of what we've seen occur. And if there's been one good thing about this, it's that the Department of Agriculture has reevaluated and performed what it was supposed to do years ago when we set up these preserves, and it was to reexamine the preserves, do their own, again, analysis, and submit to this body what should happen, whether we should continue them, whether we should open them, whether we should have seasonal stuff. All of those things were supposed to be reexamined at the end of a five-year period. None of that occurred because the easy thing to do was just continue to ban it all, you know, and so forth. And we don't know what the results would have been five years, but we know what the results are for now, that we have seen an increase in the stocks of certain fishes in the preserves, that we've seen an increase in the size and so forth. So, whether that would have happened in five years or would have taken 10 years or 14 years to occur, we know that as of today, there have been positive impact with the implementation of the preserves. So much so that, and not through their own volition, not because they feel that they needed to do this to ensure that we don't completely stifle traditional fishing on the island and continue to suppress the ability of our local people to access these safe areas to practice fishing as our ancestors have. And so, because of the public pressure, not because of some scientific thing, because of the public pressure, and I hope it's been based on scientific examination of what has occurred in the preserves, that the Department of Agriculture has actually relaxed and allowed limited fishing in these preserves. The problem is that this bill doesn't address that. What are we going to do now? So, I'm kind of, still don't understand what it's meant to do in terms of, does it impact our preserves or doesn't it? Because if it doesn't, then we don't, then we satisfy one group, but the group that had a problem of getting arrested in the preserves doesn't have access to it regardless, only at the whim of the Department of Agriculture. And if we are going to put into place policy to allow kind of a studied approach to access to these preserves, then who should have access to them? Shall it be, is that what this bill would do in terms of the native rights of fishing? Would be that when the preserves are open, are only native people going to be allowed in there to practice the traditional fishing methods? Is that what this is meant to be? If it's not, if it is, then I think we need to be much more clear in terms of what we're trying to achieve. Because if it's not, then we don't need it because they can fish year-round in every other area on the island unless, again, are we now going to say that even outside the preserves, there's going to be special privileges for our native Chamoros, the native inhabitants of Guam, for certain times of the year and so forth? So, maybe that's what the task force is going to do. But if we're going to do that with the task force, shouldn't we have our native people be part of that task force rather than just the regulators? How, and I understand they're going to have public hearings and so forth, well, we don't know because it's not mandated, that they could just come up with whatever they wanted, and then it comes down here, and only here do we then get to go through the public hearing process? I think in the development of these native rights for fishing, hunting, whatever, that in the development of the proposed rules and regs, shouldn't we have our local people involved?
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
State your point of information.
Thank you. Just for the information of the body, on page 2 of the bill, there is a provision that the Department of Agriculture is hereby tasked to develop rules and regulations to put this policy into effect and to submit draft rules and regulations in accordance with the Administrative Eduquacation Act of Title V Guam Code annotated. So, you must have public hearings.
I understand that, and I fully recognize that. But I'm saying that the formulation of those rules and regulations are going to be the purview of just the regulators, that in the formulation of those, that there are no native representatives of the native inhabitant groups and the different groups on the island that have been following this issue and have been advocating for this issue. So, while you may have the, it's like the draft EIS for the military. Unless we're intimately in there in the process of going through the development of the draft, by the time we get to the public comment section, it's already done. So, by the time that we get to the process of having the public hearing for the proposed rules and regulations, there is no opportunity to shape and influence that prior to presentation for public hearing. And that's the difference, and, you know, and that's the distinction I'm trying to make. By the time the military on the military buildup gives out its draft EIS study for public comment, they've already been formulated. So, you can't, it's harder to shape it at that point than it is if you're part of the development of the process. So, it's harder to shape the opinions and the process and the rules and regs after the development and the presentation to the public than during the process of their development. And that's the distinction I'm trying to make in this. So, I fully recognize that you will have the public hearing processes and so forth as required by rules and regs. But it's how do you get to that draft stage that I think is of concern to me in this process, just as I am concerned with regards to the EIS study, that by the time we get to public comment, you know, that ship is well on its way and it's going to take a, you know, humongous and Herculean effort to change its direction. And so, in this respect, I think that that's where some of the shortcomings of this bill. And I understand that because there hasn't been a consensus. We haven't been able to come to a consensus on that. So, shouldn't we include representatives of these native groups in the development of the proposed rules and regulations that will be subject to the public hearing process? And I just, I hate, you know, so in that respect, I think that's what I would like to see happen. And I would like, there was a draft that set up a native fishing rights council, and I would like to see that council, as envisioned by this group that's been working on this, be set up to work with the Department of Agriculture in the development of the proposed rules and regs that will be sent out. What's the harm in allowing these individuals to be part of the development process? And so, in that respect, I would like to at least make them a part of the development of the proposed rules and regulations. And as such, Madam Speaker, I would like to prepare an amendment just to present that to the group. Now, again, it doesn't, it still doesn't resolve the problem of our local people getting arrested for fishing in the preserves. And I think maybe that's something that, and if we want to exclude that, let's be very clear too, so that we don't provide any kind of ambiguity. Do we want to preserve the preserves and say, even in the development of fishing rights, it doesn't impact our preserves? Let's be clear on that. And if we're going to say then, and let maybe the council make a recommendation to the body for what can happen in the preserves, what is it that is, that they can come, you know, to themselves to come to a consensus of what can happen? The formulation of this shall not, let's be clear, and I don't mind being there, the formulation of the task force and the proposed rules and regulations shall not be in any way interpreted to opening up the preserves until the legislature or acts on that question itself, you know? And at least the indigenous people know that we're going to develop this framework of indigenous fishing rights, but at this time and for this purpose, we're not saying that that is going to transfer into the preserves. That they should, along with the Department of Agriculture, make a recommendation for a policy and a method and a process for opening up these preserves, for special events, for demonstration, for teaching, you know, and so forth, if that's how far we want to go. And I think that we can then debate those issues if it's, and we already know that the Department of Agriculture and their biologists and so forth say that there is a case to be made, because they're making it, of providing a window of being able to fish in these preserves. And let's take a look at what happens, you know, after you provide that window. And what is the policy going to be when that window is open? Is it going to be general access or is it going to be, and so forth? And let's have the Department of Agriculture and these individuals, you know, make that. So, I would like to just ask for a minute recess and present this idea of incorporating the people who are most concerned and if we want to include, you know, any other organization that may want to participate in the process of the examination of this policy for the development of native fishing rights and fishing rights in general, then let's put them on the council. So, if we have, you know, the Coral Reef Group at GW, Save the Reef Foundation, any other foundation, let's try to build the consensus, you know, and so forth. And maybe that's not such a great idea, but, you know, in terms of, maybe we're trying to mix oil and water, and it's not going to work. But I think we have to ensure that we open the process in the development of this to those most interested in. So, there's the Nature Conservatory, this group, I'm not exactly sure of what other organizations are out there, but let's open it up and have, you know, the discussion and have somebody facilitate this process in order to come up with some proposed rules and regulations. And again, let's be clear that it doesn't impact our preserves at this time until the recommendation also comes, that they shall include, that we recognize the fact that the Department of Agriculture and its biologists has, over the last year, almost eight months, been able to open fishing in the preserves for certain periods of time, and that the proposed rules and regs include a policy for that and how do you determine to open it? So that it's not just at the whim of the Department of Agriculture, but there's actually a process that everybody understands needs to be followed in order to open that window. And what kind of activity can occur when we open that window up? You know, and I just think that, you know, we need to do this in order to ensure that every single group in our community that has a stake in this, and believe me, our local Chamoros have a stake in ensuring that we have and continue to manage and preserve the fish stock, whether they're in the preserves or outside the preserves, in order to ensure that their children, our children, and those that will come and follow them are still able to practice the traditional fishing rights as well as to fish for subsistence to feed their families. Some do it because of the joy of practicing and the link to our past and our culture and keeping that alive. Some fish because it's a way of feeding their families. And how do we balance those two? And how do we balance, you know, the need to do those things as well as the need to ensure that we don't deplete our fish stock and so forth? So, I would like to just request that amendment to just include representatives in the development of the proposed rules and regs.
Okay. We're going to go into recess, and two amendments being prepared.
Some fish because it's a way of feeding their families. And how do we balance those two? And how do we balance, you know, the the need to do those things as well as the need to ensure that we don't deplete our fish stock and so forth? So I would like to just request that amendment to just include representatives in the development of the proposed rules and regs.
Okay, we're going to go in recess and two amendments being prepared.
Hey guys, you know that today the W2 was filed on the 40 minutes? Yeah, so I know it's been filed. And it's 383 and running at 42. And we're not that pleased.
Are we going to stop?
Ah, so I think it's been used.
I'm sorry, I can't close. Back yet? Which one is that? Governor Gillian? How much speed on this?
You guys all agree? You guys agree? That we're going to be the last field? You guys agree?
Yeah.
All right, you okay? You okay? It's 383. Frank, did you hear? Uh, Mark, are you here?
If they're running right now, they'll pass the job.
All right, so, okay. Can, um, Tom, call. Tell yourself it's an extension. You want to, there's people here. Um, basically, we'll talk after we're done with this. You'll talk to everybody here. You can, uh, 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 uh.
What time, what time is it? Hey, Madam? Speaker, can I speak?
Oh, yeah, no, wait for that. Now you speak, you speak.
Cause I gotta go.
You just go right in here, now you want to speak?
Hey, so, Madam? Can I raise my hand for either speaking of amendment? Madam Speaker? I'm raising my hand on both the amendment and the. Let me sit down. Not yet? 200 miles. Now I may, I may, but, uh. Okay? But you may, but you may, right? See, look, see now. I want my, I can't make it. If I can't make it, my, it's almost easy to go. Can we get, can we get, can we get it? Can we get it?
You know the story last night?
No. I already wrote it up on the pages. And that's gonna piss out the books. Oh my God. Last night. They got these. Did you change your locks yet? Wow. But no suspects. So, um, so they still here? They have even now the card? Well, what color is it? You've been saying it's ours. Did they, like, did they win yours? But you didn't steal your car. Cause if it's a little kind like. Look at the blackberry over there. You guys, it never seems to tell that when you come to V Road, I love my blackberry. That's what shows up on the shirt. Me and my blackberry.
You get the basics and then we sponsor it, that kind of stuff.
Dr. Jay.
Go with that hammer. Would you need a force set?
They're ready, is, uh, do you need a force set? Dr. Jay.
With that, with that two keys hammer, that wouldn't be in the future for a force set.
Dr. Jay, go take a look at your office again.
Oh, thank you. Who's the sponsor that you got? Um, did this change, they came out with two food all-in-one? A lot of, a lot of action. Okay. Okay. But, uh, hey, uh, good talking to you. Thanks, thanks so much for your time, I appreciate it.
It was determined by now.
I was asking, where is it, like, they say that was, that we want to open up the reserves to the citizens? All it was is telling agriculture to deliver the rules and everything. No, I'm reading, you know, the website. You know, if you do this, you're gonna, you're gonna defeat the sparks. Where does it say that we defeat the sparks by living? We're saying develop it so there's a spark, don't get defeated, but then also acting nicer.
The rights.
The rights.
Give it to him. Okay, I'll take Eddie's office. I'll take Eddie's office. I'll take Eddie's office. The office almost at forty-five. I see that he didn't make it. So you want to abandon it? No. Seduce and abandon. Seduce and abandon. Oh, I'm seduced. I'm not seducing, I'm just abandoning you. Same thing. I have a question. You attract me with all of your... I answer, I have a question, I have a question. I have a question. Did you read Marv? Yes. About my purple hair. That was very nice. That's not very nice. It said, did you read Marv? About my purple hair. Was that a propaganda? Something else, right? That's true. You're right. My father used to drive up there.
You know, down there, right? I went down.
Yeah. Where Belma Harper has her count. That area.
You know, on the left-hand side.
I know, I know, but the same area.
Where, where the, where the Algarve is stored.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Behind that used to be a huge landfill.
Can he just, can he just, uh...
No. Middle street, the other part. I didn't get here in nineteen sixty-two. That's why.
It didn't clear you out of immigration.
She didn't clear me out of immigration. Did they move the door? But, but it was.
I said that's what's wrong.
I hate all you kids. Two hundred and forty-six million. Oh, this is, oh, this is your mom. I guess you got seduced and abandoned. It wasn't very round, if it wasn't very square here. Oh, and taken up, like, they take that arm. I might vote this way.
Hey, take something to me.
Go get your own four hundred. He better warn you.
You promise?
I promise. I don't doubt that.
No, I'm saying, the problem is when I don't want to see it, they're all over it, that's when I want to see it again. So I could say, eh, sorry, I need to go.
I know. When I was looking for my red, I couldn't find it, whatever I'm not looking for.
Every time you turn a corner.
Turns up, like, eating ice cream, turns up a rose.
Uh, what can I do? I would walk.
Let's go.
Okay, guys. All right, you got to the left in the right.
The legislature is back in session. Every member should have a copy of the amendment on your desk. And Speaker Ben, you are recognized on your amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment really is, uh, would ensure the participation and of the, um, native indigenous groups who have an interest in native fishing rights and the development of these rules and regs. And it is, it is the first step, you know, once we get these rules and regs, then we, we go into the deliberation of crafting a structure to support the proposed rules and regs, uh, to be implemented. And so, uh, what we want to do is ensure that, prior to getting to that point, that in the development of those rules and regs, that there is input, participation, um, by these, uh, individuals and groups that have an interest in that. So, um, I would like to amend, uh, at the end of section two, to add that, uh, what has been passed out and basically says that, at all stages in the development of these rules, the Department of Agriculture shall seek the input and consult with the Indigenous Native Resources Task Force that is being formed, which shall comprise of ten voting members, four men, four women, two youths of adult age, all of Chamorro ancestry. And then the task force shall be appointed by the governor and be comprised of one representative elected from no more than ten of these grassroots organizations. And that each, uh, task force member shall be a resident of Guam for at least five years. The task force shall participate together with the Department of Agriculture in the formulation of the rules and regs required by this section. And again, this is not the end of it, this is the beginning of it. Once we have these rules and regs and the recommendation, uh, that in going to encompass, uh, you know, the, the fishing practices and, and, and the special, uh, accommodations and rights and privileges granted, uh, to the native inhabitants of Guam. And if we decide, this legislative body then, upon the receipt of those proposed rules, if we decide to implement them, understanding then, then they'll be, they will need to create a structure, uh, for the implementation of that. And then at that time, we'll be able to work on additional, um, um, permanization, maybe you might want to call it, of this task force, uh, to augment the efforts of the Department of Agriculture in the monitoring and the enforcement of the rules and regs that is ultimately passed by this body. And so I ask my colleagues, uh, to expand the process to ensure that those that are going to be most affected by the development of indigenous fishing rights policy, uh, have, uh, participation and active, uh, uh, process in the development of these proposed rules and regs. Thank you.
You're welcome, Speaker Ben. Uh, Senator Calvo, and then I have the vice speaker, and if there's anybody else, please let me know. On the amendment.
Well, thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I'm in favor of the amendment, but I wanted to speak in favor of the bill. So I have nothing to say other than I'm in amendment. I'm in favor of the amendment, but I will speak later on the bill.
Okay. Vice Speaker, Shemizel.
This is a good amendment because it provides inclusion, uh, you know, at the very, very first step towards developing. However, I just wanted to, um, to, uh, raise a point. What if the governor doesn't appoint? I, I know we have a lot of, uh, boards and commissions that are in place, and those nominees are not there. I'm wondering if it is organic that, uh, should the governor does not appoint within, let's say, a hundred and twenty days, three hundred and twenty, whatever, whatever amount of days, and he does not do that for the sole purpose of not having this, um, amendment come into a reality, would it be organic to say that failure to do so, that the, uh, speaker of the legislature then be able to carry out the intent of this amendment? And, um, and that's only my concern, because as we all know, there are commissions, very important commissions, that deals with our, um, um, issues such as this, that, you know, has not even gotten off the ground. Because the governor does not either participate in that commission, um, or want to participate, or it can just let this thing become dormant. So I, uh, my question would be to, to, uh, uh, legal counsel before, um, an amendment can occur, should the government does not carry this out, can the speaker, are there other provisions of law that would authorize this branch of government to do an executive function because he fails to carry out, uh, the, uh, the, uh, policy of, uh, the territory? So I wanted to ask that as a point of, uh, information, um, and if legal counsel or anybody of this body, uh, would want to, uh, that may be knowledgeable of that, because if it's not, it shall be appointed by the governor, and it doesn't, then where do we go with this? I want to make sure that it does happen.
I'm going to take a minute recess, and we'll consult with the legal counsel.
Ben?
The legislature is back in session.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, you know, um, this is a task force, and I'm wondering that, uh, when you, you empower the governor to make those appointments and he doesn't, then the task force, uh, uh, fails to, to have a, a portfolio in standing to take over to the Department of Agriculture. So I'm wondering now if, if, um, there's no, um, to be able to get around, uh, if there is a, a legal impediment, is the task force shall be comprised of one, and just delete, delete, uh, shall be appointed by the governor, and, um, all the way to and, and it says the task force shall be comprised, and that's the policy of this body, that this task force, who'll be working with Department of Agriculture, shall consist of the following people, and just remove the, the, uh, language of, uh, so my, my, um, suggestion as an amendment is, um, after the word, um, the task force, delete, shall be appointed by the governor, and just delete that in its entirety. So you'll read now, the task force shall be comprised of one representative, and, and leave it at that.
On, on the motion then to amend, uh, the amendment to delete the word "shall be appointed by the governor" and, are there any objections? No objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the amendment, are there any other speakers? There being none, we're going to, on the main bill then, Senator Calvo, on the main bill.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the passage of Bill Number Three Twenty Seven. Again, I think it's an issue, uh, not only particular to our native rights, but also human rights. Um, it's interesting to note, uh, that when it comes to, to our local, uh, individuals that are making low use of our cultural, uh, habits in, in fishing, as well as just even westernized fishing, those that work the shoreline are, are, a lot of them are individuals that are fishing not for profit, uh, but to put food, uh, in the mouths and stomachs of their families. Many of these individuals can't afford a boat to go fishing in, in the, in the blue, blue waters of the Pacific, and must make use of what meager resources they have. As we deal in issues such as this, and I think we have to also touch on issues maybe for a later date, uh, for all the shores of Guam, and that includes the preserves, we understand that we have to look towards building our fish stocks in, in this island, but we also must weigh that with the necessities of our people. And our people, understanding the economic realities of Guam and the world, and the difficulty of having necessary income, not only for a house, uh, but for the food in a table. We must balance these needs, again, and ensure that as laws and regulations are passed by this local government, that they are not only in the best interest of the environment, which I, which I also believe is important, but most importantly, what are the best interests of our people? As we move forward in these next few years, uh, there's going to be much change in this island and in the Marianas chain. I, I, as a conservative Republican, I'm very concerned in whether it's the federal or the local government, when it comes to land taking and the rights of the individual and to make use of properties, and whether it's land or sea. There is a debate going on now. Again, it's President Bush's Blue Ocean Policy. I'm not too sure, and here I am a Republican, but I don't know whether the President, the outgoing President's Blue Ocean Policy is one of more environment, but more federal annexation of properties and lands owned by, again, whether it's a territory of Guam or the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas. My concern, again, as we deal in issues, not only on our land, and our sovereign rights of our land and our ocean, but also of our brothers and sisters in the Northern Marianas, that we must take, take care in the policies that we implement as a local government, as well as policies set forth by the federal government when it comes to the restrictions of the use of land and seas. Uh, Madam Speaker, again, I, I rise in, in support of Bill Number Three Twenty Seven. Uh, I think it's important. I think we also must tie in the economic issues that are involved as well, and ensuring that, again, our people allow the opportunity to, to fish and fish to ensure that they can provide food in the table, uh, for their families. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Senator Tenori?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I too rise in support of this bill. It was a, it's been a long rigorous road for many people in dealing with the issues that are before, um, our island. We are all feeling the crunch of the economic crisis that our island has felt now for many years. Um, and I also want to applaud the efforts of, uh, the, the good gentleman from, uh, Baragata with regard to the inclusion of those individuals within our community who not just fish, uh, because it's something for sustenance, it's something that's part of their culture. Uh, you know, my primo, Franklin Crisostomo from, uh, Inarahan goes fishing uh, on a regular basis, uh, and we used to call him Ghost because he would go down when we were catching the lobster in, um, Inarahan, when I was living in Inarahan, uh, when I was much younger. And, uh, he would go down for four or five minutes at a time, and we'd come back up, uh, holding two different lobsters, and, uh, he would, uh, you know, he put them in the bag, and we would go for hours and hours on end, uh, fishing down in, in the, um, in the reef in Inarahan. And those are the times that I remember with great fondness. Because those are the things that we ate, you know, on the tables in the backyard of the house, uh, at, uh, Auntie Fina and Uncle Joe's house, at, uh, and this is the old Inarahan, this is the house when, when, uh, there was really nothing else around. Everybody would go down there, and we, we would enjoy each other's company, and we enjoyed the fish, and, uh, they would, they would eat, because the bounty was great. And that's the thing that sustenance is, it's the things to feed our families, to feed our grandchildren, to feed our grandparents, to feed our own selves, to be able to take care of the families within our community so that they don't have to rely on going to the store to buy the fish unnecessarily. That's the thing that Guam is about. It's about taking care of the things that we need that are closest to us. And, you know, uh, Madam Speaker, um, there are many people out in our gallery here today that have been here religiously over the course of weeks, asking for this bill to come to, uh, come to the floor. And I'm glad, and I, and I commend the author for the work that she's done on this. I too echo the sentiments of, um, my colleagues with regards to concerns on the preserves. We need to make sure that we are all looking out, and I think everybody, uh, is in, in unanimous sort of, uh, concern with regards to the preserves and making sure that our grandchildren are not going to find minuscule populations of fish within these same waters that we love. We want to see these same waters populated as a result of the preserves, and I think we've clearly seen that. The science and the empirical data has backed up the fact that the preserves are working. So my, my concern is the same as many of our concerns, that we're not going to, uh, throw the baby out with the bath wash. We're going to do a measured and very careful approach to this, and I think this vehicle, uh, this bill that is is a vehicle for making that happen. Uh, so I want to commend, um, uh, the, uh, the author of this bill, and I think that she's, uh, been cautious in the way that she's approached this, and I think we need to continue to be cautious so that when we do allow for the acknowledgement of our culture and our fishing that has been a tradition in our families for generations, we're not, at the same time, cutting off that same supply of stock that is coming from our preserves so that our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren continue to enjoy the same things that are the fruits of the labors of prior senators in this hall that established those same preserves. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this, and I, I ask my colleagues to look at this as well and support it. This is Masi.
Senator Spaudon, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. You know, I, throughout the past several months, as this bill was coming to a head, my main concern was there, there was a lot of talk and discussion on this bill that purported to demonstrate, or not demonstrate, that purported to move the effort forward to open up the preserves to fishing. And as the chairman of several oversights, including cultural affairs, as well as natural resources, and these are the two, uh, oversights that perhaps had some kind of tension between them, there was a constant battle going on in my head, what do we do? Now, prior to the election, this past election, I know I was characterized as being anti-Chamorro. And I feel bad for that in that, because I, I believe that, at least I know, in my heart, that's the furthest thing from the truth. This is the only home that I know. These are, these are my only neighbors and my only family that I know. I have lived in many parts of the U.S., I have lived for a couple of years in the Philippines when I was a young child, but this is my home. These are the people that I've been raised with, these are the people that I consider my family. So when the sentiment went out that because I was against opening up the preserves to fishing, and then to be characterized as being anti-Chamorro, it hurt to a degree. Because it was not an expression of being against the very indigenous people who have welcomed me and my family here. It was more an expression in terms of preserving what we need to go forward with to make sure that the children, the grandchildren, and the generations to come of those who have welcomed us to this island will have something to also enjoy. I remember going out fishing myself when I was young, I hung out with the boys from Assan. And they were good fishermen along the Assan Reef, we'd go from Camel, we'd go from Adalup all the way to Camel Rock, and back to, back to Adalup, and we'd spearfish. And back then, the fish were plentiful. After being in the States for several, for about ten years, I came back and I called upon some of my friends down in Assan, and I said, "Let's go out again." We went out. And to my dismay, there were no fish, or there were hardly any fish worth catching. Nothing that you'd want to spear, definitely, and nothing that, that, that we could do to cook. I mean, you know, it's nothing we could partake of in an enjoyable manner, and that alarmed me. And so when this whole idea of the fishing preserves came in, I was kind of glad because it is an issue about the science of restocking our reefs, because we know that the detrimental effects of the development that has gone on our island throughout the ages, especially through the, through the eighties, the late eighties and early nineties, have been detrimental to the fishing grounds in which we, as islanders, have been able to go and enjoy, whether it's just to enjoy the fish or to spear it, or, and, and bring it home to eat. And that's why my real concern about this was that are we going to open up the preserves so that we deplete the total stocks, so that future generations to come won't be able to enjoy what we are now actually kind of missing? And I think it's important that we replenish our stock, that we grow our reefs back, so that we can enjoy that kind of lifestyle. Now, this bill, and I, and, and first of all, before I even go any further, I would like to thank Senator Guthrie for introducing this bill. I know that, that there was a lot of discussion, that I was holding it back in committee, uh, and would not release this bill. Again, that was not the intention, that was furthest from the intention. Again, this was in working with a good senator who introduced the bill, the good author, right, to see if there were perhaps some changes that needed to be made, that she thought that she might want to introduce. I'd also like to thank Senator Pangolinan for clearly articulating, I think, what we all felt, right, that there is a need to, to, to make sure that the marine preserves are intact for future generations, for not only just for it now, but for future generations. However, even the concern in terms of addressing what the real issue is, right, Senator Pangolinan articulated it very well, and I thank him for that. Because I, I don't want to have to add to that, I don't have to say what he said, and I, I don't think I can do it because he did it very well, and I would like to echo those sentiments. But in supporting this bill, I think it's important to recognize, and again, from my perspective, this past term has been a very difficult, a very trying term for me in terms of trying to understand and learn processes in the legis, in the legislature, as well as learn the issues among all the committees that I had. Of the committees that I chaired, I had oversight over the judiciary, over natural resources, over infrastructure, over cultural affairs, over maritime affairs, over federal affairs, over military affairs, over veterans affairs, and over tourism. And when you step back, and when you take all these different issues related to all those different areas of which I had to concern myself with, there are thousands, excuse me, let me just say hundreds, I won't even exaggerate, hundreds of issues associated with that whole plethora of oversight. And a lot of times, there were tensions created in my own mind, or that I had to deal with in my own mind. Because in one, in one aspect, I had to make sure that, say for example, that the cultural aspects are fully developed and moved forward in terms of those issues. While at the same time, there was tensions between the necessity to improve our infrastructure, which may come at a cost of some of the ways we do things on this island, as well as improvements to, to other aspects and other changes that we're going to go through. I, I have been able to, or I've had forced myself many times through sleepless nights to step back away from that picture and try to take a look at the overall concern. And I think we have to be very worried about what's going to happen in the next few years. With all this development, there's some things that we cannot control. There are some things that are out of jurisdiction of our call, there is nothing we can't do. But there are still many things that we can do. And one of them is, in terms of trying to protect as much as possible, the preservation of the culture on this island. And that's important going forward. Because as we go forward, we're going to see vast populations of people coming in from other, from other places who will introduce other concepts and other ways of life. And if we don't solidify ourselves right now in terms of defining who the Chamorro people are and what this island is all about, then we stand to lose that identity, and that is not acceptable. We need to make sure that those who come in understand what the values, what the traditions, what the most meaningful things to this society are, so that those newcomers to this island can incorporate it into their own lifestyle and not dictate what they know, but to accept what we practice. what we practice. And that's exactly the way I was raised. When my father and mother came here from the Philippines, we came on purely on goodwill. My parents are both doctors, and the only concern they had was for the health care and the well-being of the people of this island. We fell in love with this island the very moment we stepped foot on it. I was seven years old at the time, 1963. We were supposed to be here only for six months, because it was right after Typhoon Karen, and there was a call that went out, because there was a need for medical professionals on this island. There were hardly any. My father, with the kind heart, and my mother, with the kind of enthusiasm she had to support my father, we came here on a medical mission. But once we landed, and again, let me just go on to say that we were only supposed to be for six months, because he, my father, was offered a nice position at one of the prestigious universities in the United States, and that's exactly where we were destined to go. But after the first couple of days here, I think my parents made up their mind that this is where we were going to be. The people have been hospitable to us, they have allowed us to raise our families here, they have allowed us to expand and grow with them, and they have taken us in as their I am devoted to this island. There is no other place I can go to that I can call home. This is it. There is no other people around, even though I'm of Filipino ancestry, there are no other people around that I can call my people. You might say, "Well, you're Filipino, how can you call the Chamoros your people?" Well, because I was raised here. I know this island, I know my home, I have walked the jungles, I have hunted with my friends, I have fished with my friends. This is where I was raised. And we need to make sure that going forward, that we do preserve something to ourselves. When I say "ourselves," I'm talking about the people of this land. And though I might be an outsider, I feel that this is part of me also. This is a big part of me, it's the only part of me, really, when it comes to where I'm from. I'm from Guam. I travel here and there, they ask me where I'm from. I'm from Guam. I'm from no other place. And as we go forward, it's important that we preserve certain privileges, I believe, to the local people of this land. My concern all along was just making sure that when we start talking about the environmental aspect, the natural resources aspect, as it relates to the cultural aspects of this land, that we don't forsake either one. There's got to be a good marriage between the two, because again, we can deplete the stock and have it not come back, and then we're going to be in a bad situation. We lose part of our identity. And so that's why the preserves are very important to me. The science has proved that the preserves are working. But this method, as what's being proposed right here, I think is a good compromise, where you have the voice of the local fishermen and the local people to help develop the rules and the policies that will be established by the Department of Parks, excuse me, Department of Agriculture going forward, so that we as a community can move forward and making sure that we do protect. The other thing I want to mention is that I think this is only the beginning. Going forward, because of what's going to happen with the militarization of this island, with a lot of businessmen coming from off-island, probably from the Asian region, as well as the mainland United States, I think we have to sit down, not just in terms of fishing rights, but also other cultural rights or Chamorro rights, right, as we move forward. And we need to make that argument, not just here, but I think nationally. We need to make a very strong argument, and this is where we cannot afford to be divided anymore based on politics, based on being a Republican or a Democrat. We need to come together because we are all Guamanians. Most of us here are Chamoros, but in all, we all have the same affinity for this island, for its people, for its ways, for its culture, and we must always keep that in mind. And so with that, as my foundation, I stand in full support of this measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Spaldan. The author had asked that then, or Senator Respechel will close, so you'll be the last speaker then and make the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill, 327, even more so after the amendment offered by the good senator from Baragata. You know, about five years ago, in 2003, I had the privilege, and I say it's a privilege because whenever we're given these committee assignments, it was a privilege for me to chair the Natural Resources Committee, and just like the previous speaker who chairs that committee now, we really always have to walk a fine line and a balance between two opposing forces. But in this case, this bill represents a compromise, as a good retiring senator said, a compromise that does not have to pit our Chamorro people over other people who called Guam home, over government bureaucrats such as the Department of Agriculture. It's a compromise that can really send a strong message that we could coexist, there could be a balance between preserving our environment and wanting to preserve our culture and our natural abilities, to want to teach our young people about the indigenous fishing practices. One of the most difficult committee hearings that I've ever had to chair was in 2003 when we had our first oversight hearing involving the marine preserve. It was very contentious, the days leading up to that oversight hearing, Madam Speaker, because on one hand, you had the government of Guam, the quote-unquote "environmentalist" who believed that that was a blatant attempt to want to open up the preserves, to allow for any kind of fishing practices. But all along, on the other side, you had our people who were very respectful and supportive of the need to have a marine preserve. Even five years later, when there was a hearing on this bill, every single person who testified in favor of this bill said they support the marine preserves, and this is not an outright attempt to go and raid whatever fish are available in those preserves. This was a clear attempt, rather, Madam Speaker, to recognize the need for sustenance-type fishing and the need to have traditional Chamorro practices handed down to future generations. And I'm happy to say over and over that that hearing went very well, went very well, because the Department of Agriculture understood that there really is no need to lock up the marine preserves 365 days of the year. And that hearing resulted in them loosening up their permitting requirements so that they can have seasonal-type fishing, and so you could see that the government also has taken bold steps to open up the preserves for these things that I talked about, when the maniak is bountiful and when the maniak runs, they allow for fishermen to fish in those areas. Although we've come a long way, we obviously haven't gone far enough. We haven't gone far enough, because right now, when there's a maniak run in Maritza, the Maritza residents or anyone wanting to fish in the Maritza pier would have to go down to agriculture, get a conservation officer to go and see for themselves that there are maniak there, but by that time, the maniak is gone. And so how then could they be able to go and catch those maniak after they've already left that area? So I think in passing this bill, and particularly the amendment where we're going to establish this Natural Resources Task Force made up of grassroots Chamoros, I think we're going to really put our people at the table where our people belong and not have individuals who believe that the marine preserves is to preserve that area, but at the same time promotes the extinction of our Chamorro people, and so there's like a disconnect. This bill always had the intention of protecting the marine preserves and to strike a balance between the two desires. But you automatically have individuals come out in full force. We got hundreds of hate emails thinking that we're going to do just the opposite. And so do those people from the government that's responsible for these preserves. I hope that they embrace this bill and see it as a way to have that balance between the two interests. And I'm also happy to see the Magahaga, Trini Torres, and others, who, if you recall, during our budget session, camped out here every single night, praying the rosary, praying that we'll have some ability to see how this bill can preserve Chamorro fishing rights. You know, like the previous speaker talked of his experiences here on Guam, I want to spend a little time talking about my experiences growing up, where my dad took me to Talaza in Tuman, where right now it's almost impossible to do, and also Sulu and other types. Did I enjoy it? Yeah. Do I regret going? No. My brother enjoyed it more than I did, because I couldn't understand as a 10-year-old why anybody would want to go 2:00 in the morning with a headlight and with a spearfish and look for the, with all due respect, look for the donggat, the spark in the sejans eye, so that you go and you pick those fish up. I always wondered why people really wanted to do that, but in most cases, just like in our case, it was to live. People, our local fishermen, do that to survive. It's sustenance-type fishing. They make sacrifices to go out there in the middle of the morning where it's cold, where it's, you know, you have to do some things like that to get the food that they need to put on their table in order to live. And if we start setting up barriers that prevent people from having access to these kinds of resources just to get by, I think we would have been doing a great disservice to the entire people of Guam, not just to the Chamoros. And so I rise in full support of this bill, and I want to say that this is just a big giant step forward, but that there's more to come, because the fact that we're going to have a Native Resources Task Force that's going to work alongside the Department of Agriculture, you can be guaranteed that your voices and your concerns and our voices and our concerns and our desire to make these fishing practices available to teach our young, and so they can grow up in the kind of Guam that we recall, as young as I am, I still recall Guam being a very special place to live, I still believe that it is, and Bill 327 would go a long way to preserve that specialness, at the same time, strike a balance and need to preserve the marine preserves. And I'm glad to see that there's a harmony of interest. And having said that, I move that Bill 327 be placed in the voting file.
On the motion to place the Bill 327 as amended in the voting file, there being no objections, order. I'm going to take a minute recess. Thank you. The legislature's back in session. Senator Respechel, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to recess till 2:00 p.m. today.
Okay. On the motion to recess without an objection for lunch, we'll be back at 2:00. Sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I say, "Thank you."
Can I say, "Thank you."
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I say, "Thank you."
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 Guam Ghi Kai to you know ah, eh, to, Chi Chi Fu Chi Chi no shita ni orimashite, 15, Senator I don't know this year. That's it, come on, I don't know, 11 years of 60, I know. 11 years of 60, I know, 30, I mean, oh, Ghi Kai, oh, so, oh, no, 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 election, San Jose,
Recognized for Bill Number 378.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill Number 378 be moved to third reading. And I just want to say that pursuant to Section 7.05.05 of the Standing Rules, which deals with reversions to original bills and vetoes, that in such cases where Imagalang Guam has vetoed a bill, the Speaker or the body by majority vote may authorize that the original version of such bill, having already received a public hearing, be immediately placed in the second reading file for further action without recourse to a new public hearing. And we already moved to place this bill on the second reading file. And I'm saying to you and to the body that a public hearing on this measure has already been entertained and the bill, as you know, has been vetoed. And we had several attempts for an override. And I want to present to the group a new bill, which I hope would garner support. And I'd like to speak briefly on Bill 378.
Yes, you may. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Bill 378 deals with creating the Guam First Commission. And we all know the history behind the attempt to try to do this. We all know what some of the governor's objections were to creating a Guam First Commission. And we believe that we satisfied his objections by saying to him that he is going to be the head of this Guam First Commission and that the civilian military task force will be the technical arm to this Guam First Commission. So in no way are we usurping the governor's authority to be the head and lead negotiator for what this buildup will do to our island community. We're also saying in no way we want to disrupt any of the work of the ongoing civilian military task force because continuity will be guaranteed by way of having this task force, the civilian military task force, the technical arm to this Guam First Commission. But what we're also saying to the chief executive by passing this bill, Madam Speaker, is that we have to, once and for all, put Guam first to make sure that when this military buildup occurs, that we try to build one Guam community and not have a community built up within the defenses there in the military bases. Everything that we've heard so far speaks to anything but creating a one community. And that's why I think it's high time that this legislative body pass this bill. And I think it's high time that the governor recognize how much stronger we will be if we have a united Team Guam effort. The past five years, Madam Speaker, we've seen different factions of our community. We've seen the governor try to negotiate the Guam buildup on his own. We've seen the lieutenant, former Lieutenant Governor Kaleo Mullen bring several senators, such as yourself, Senator Cruz, Senator Lohan, and a few mayors to Okinawa Prefecture to see what the Marines there have done to that community and try to make sure that that doesn't happen here on Guam. We've seen several senators here introduce resolutions saying that this military buildup will at least cost $2.4 billion in necessary upgrades to our infrastructure, to our water, wastewater systems, not to mention the landfill and all of the problems that will occur. We've seen the mayors themselves express concerns for what this military buildup will do to impact their own individual villages. We've seen members of our Indigenous Chamora Rights Group stand up and protest and express legitimate concerns with respect to what this Guam military buildup will do. We've seen all these concerns expressed by different sectors of our island community. We've seen the business community and the Guam Chamber of Commerce express renewed opportunity and hope for our economy with this military buildup. We've seen other people express, like such as the effort you're leading with the Fwetsan Famalawen, express concern on what we can do to educate our population on some of the social impacts this military will have and how to prevent it. While all these concerns are legitimate, and I want to recognize that as an effort to make sure that we protect Guam and that Guam benefits as a whole, the fact that we have different factions representing our island has really diluted our ability to make a very strong case to put Guam first. And so this bill is not about Republican or Democrat or any partisan, any partisan nature. It's really a bill that puts all the different stakeholders at the same time, the same place. It even has our delegate to Congress as a member of this commission because we really need to express to delegate Congresswoman Bredalio what some of the concerns are here on Guam. We have the mayors that are going to be a part of this. We have representatives of this legislature that will be a part of this. We have the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Guam, who may appoint, designate someone or appoint himself. We even have a youth member who would be on this commission. We have a member to represent the Fwetsan Famalawen. We have the administrator of the Guam Economic Development and Commerce Authority, the general manager of the Guam Visitors Bureau, the chairperson of the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, who will be an ex-official, non-voting member in this group. Because one of the biggest issues with this military buildup is if we don't have an integrated power, water, and wastewater system. And if the Navy pulls out as a customer of the Guam Power Authority, we're going to see a potential $20 million, $21 million dollar impact. And that $21 million is going to have to be borne by the current ratepayers. We also have the adjutant general, who would be on this commission. And like I said earlier, we're going to have, the governor is going to be required to appoint someone who is going to represent the Indigenous Rights Group here on our island. And I've been very hopeful that this legislature will address this bill. We don't have to wait till January to do it. And I'm hoping that the governor will recognize this approach as a way where he can have everybody at the same time and the same place. So that when we have delegations from Congress, Codel groups, or when we have high-ranking military officials come to Guam, they don't have to meet individually with all these different stakeholders and leaders and that the legislature will not continue to get snubbed and wonder why they didn't come and visit the legislature when a lot of the policy and then how we prepare ourselves for this military buildup must come from this legislative branch of government. So I've been perplexed over the years to wonder why the governor would not see this as a tool to better position us. And so I have a very quick amendment to make. And this amendment was passed out. And it's with the understanding that the governor's currently initiated a request for a proposal process to deal with the military buildup. And I think that that procurement process should be dovetailed into this Guam First Commission. So we'll add a new subsection F that reads, "To participate in the procurement process to include, but not limited, to the development of scope of work, the selection and evaluation process, and to provide Imagalang Guam with a recommendation for an award of contract with any procurement by the government of Guam associated with the military buildup." So that whoever is chosen to provide this kind of support to prepare Guam for the Guam buildup, then rightfully so it be dovetailed into this commission, which the governor himself is going to chair. And so I ask my colleagues to support this bill to recognize how much we could be better positioned if we truly had a commission today that brings all these important players to the table with a scope of work and a mission to always advocate for Guam first in anything that we do. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, on the amendment.
On the amendment, are there any speakers? None, then? On the amendment, so if there are no objections to the amendment, then so therefore the amendment passes. On the main bill?
I have another amendment that was being suggested at the end of Subsection 2302, just to add in the words "and those duties as further directed by this act." So it's all-encompassing.
Page four, five? Senator Respecho, can you tell us where exactly?
After, so page four, page five.
Three, 301. It's supposed to be two, 301. It's supposed to be section 2301. And that's on page three, starting at page three.
Okay. So it would be after the word Executive Order Number 2006-10. So it would be a comma, "and those duties further directed by this act."
Comma, "and those duties..."
"as further directed by this act."
"as further directed in this act."
Can I just get confirmation from the Legislative Council if that's where she's suggesting we put that? So on page four?
Yes, she confirmed.
On page four, at the end of line four.
So on page four, the end of line four, after the number 10, put a comma and add the words, "and those duties as further directed in this act."
By this act.
By this act.
Yeah.
Okay, on that amendment, are there any objections? No objections, amendment passes. Are there any speakers then now on the main motion as amended? Senator Guthers.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I stand to support the motion of my colleague. You know, it's very interesting at this point to recognize that we still don't have a lot of information about the buildup. And some information that is available is not being shared with us or others on the island. I recently learned that a draft of the EIS was provided to the governor's office for their review. This is the EIS required in conjunction with the buildup that the Guam Program Office has been supposedly working on to meet these federal requirements. I don't know if anyone here has seen it, but I have not seen it. And I am very concerned about that. There doesn't seem to be a central location coordinating the buildup in a way that shares information. As a result, there's a lot of insecurity in the community about the buildup. And rightly so. At this point, the people of Guam should already know what to expect. But we don't. We're not getting proper information from federal officials, from the United States Congress, from the Guam Program Office, or from our own governor's office. Madam Speaker, this is not a private party, this buildup. This is something that's going to affect every man, woman, and child who calls Guam home now and in the future. And what has been lacking in this process is an appropriate organizational methodology on the part of the civilian government of Guam to deal with the buildup. Now, I admire and I recognize the efforts of the governor and the Military-Civilian Task Force. But that's not enough. It's not enough. If it were enough, then people would not have the questions that they have and would not be bombarding senators every day with their questions about the buildup. Now, we all know in the next legislature we're going to have a committee that's devoted to the buildup, a legislative committee. And I think that's very prudent at this time because it demonstrates that the legislature is concerned. Concerned enough to want to have a focus on this subject in order to have the information needed by the civilian community, not just for planning, but to keep our people informed. So I stand here to support the motion of my colleague. We need the Guam First Commission. Because right now Guam is not first. I don't even know if we're second in this process. And that just is not right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Guthers. Are there any speakers on the main bill as amended? Okay, there being none. Senator Respecho, then on the amendment to, and the motion to send it down to the third reading file, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We're now on Bill Number 103. And the author? Senator Palacios. On Bill Number 103. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. There was a request by the author of this bill to refer this back to the committee.
Okay, and the motion then to refer it back to committee without any objections, so ordered. We're on Bill 297.
Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill Number 297, I have a substituted version, but I was, I didn't get an opportunity to reproduce it. So would you give me a couple minutes to have this reproduced? It's not very thick.
It will be in recess for reproduction of the substituted version.
Are we going to go to 1, 2, 3, 8, 3? Has the administration been called?
Is it Benny Gross?
No, I hear Eddie up there. Do you have the administration in the office?
Go get there.
Are we in the building?
Yes.
We've been waiting since 2:00.
I was, uh...
Well, not yet, not yet.
But not yet now. We were, we were going to be happy as hell. And then we're going to vote for the decision, right? We were continuing to, you didn't know where they were?
They're in the back.
They're all right here. But they're hiding back there now.
So what do we do now? Let's vote for us too. Guys, I wasn't too sure when this bill was going to come out. Oh, yeah, we're going to vote first, right? We'll vote first.
Yes.
So Ray, we're going to have to hold your bill and still... Do you have a way to make their people or I can't even talk to them?
Ready to vote? Here you go.
My Jesus.
Wow. We're going to get our Guam First Commission.
Hey, you're going to get more than 10 votes.
You hope? No, he's going to vote for me because they put a Manako in there. You made me, you made me like...
I gotta watch out for my citizens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I didn't, I have to, that was a pretty smart, uh, that's thinking. 30 minutes? I thought it's an emergency. So why don't we go ahead and maybe come on and, um...
No, what?
Well, you may think that was different, but we just, let's... You want to just act like what you...
And it could be a special or general... That was the original bill, right? Dr. J, that was your original bill? It was five years?
The legislature's back in session. Everyone should have a copy of the substituted bill for 297. So Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill Number 297. And I would like to first move to substitute the bill, which has been given a copy to all members, to replace the one in the committee report.
Okay, on that motion then to accept substituted by the author and on the floor for Bill 297, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 297 EC as substituted by the author on the floor in the third reading. I'd like to speak on the motion.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, this issue with regards to this bill has been lingering and festering for many, many years. The mechanics lien laws of Guam are antiquated, to say the least. Many, many, a lawsuit has arisen as a consequence of the antiquated laws that we do have. Many of the laws that are on the books are modeled after, I think it's a 60-year-old California pinocote. And the laws have been, they have attempted to make changes to them and they have been met by fierce resistance by different factors of the community, which are stakeholders in the development, financing, and also the contracting aspect of mechanics liens. This bill is the product of the work, and I want to give the proper applause and the credence to those individuals who have worked diligently on this, which are those attorneys, Mr. Arthur Clark and Mr. Tom Tarpley. Both gentlemen have really come to the table to try to resolve the issue dealing with mechanics liens. And frankly, the budget process was a catalyst...
His project that may affect the economic viability of the project, that affects his pocketbook very clearly, and I fully understand that. And the contractor who, and the subcontractor, who was supposed to have gone through five or six different processes in order to make sure he protects his interests in terms of providing labor, materials, goods, and services to that project. So it's much clearer, much more streamlined, much easier to understand, much easier to implement, in my opinion. And I don't need to go to the specifics on it, but certainly, as I said, in that experience in California, experience, I had the, you know, another experience of working as the construction, again, an owner's representative in a multimillion-dollar construction project here on Guam, working under the old mechanic's lien. And definitely, you know, fortunately for us, we were very diligent in that project. We made sure that we paid our contractor. We had our progress payments. We had our billing and our invoices. We required receipts for the materials and goods and services provided. And we made sure that our prime contractor, or our original contractor, paid his subs. And so we did these progress payments, but it takes a lot of work to do that. And, you know, something falls through the crack, you open yourself up to being subject to a lien and having to spend the time, effort, and money to cure that process. And it threatens, again, you know, the progress of the project, et cetera, et cetera. So I understand and I commend the parties that have come together on this thing. I certainly feel much better working it through this process in the light of day. And when we've had some meeting of the minds, I don't think anybody's 100% happy. If we find a bill that goes out of this with everybody 100% happy, then something's wrong. But we've been able to cure the uneasiness of the two parties that are, don't necessarily have to be adversaries. They actually need to be partners in these projects. Because that's the only way you can have a successful project that can come in on budget and on time. And I think that the simplification of this bill to what we have before us on the floor, I think is certainly much more easier to support on my part. And I commend the author and the parties involved for continually to work on this thing until we've been able to get a meeting of the minds. And I look forward to supporting the final vote on this bill. And I want to thank all the parties involved. Mrs. Marci, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Are there any other speakers on Bill 297? Senator Tenorio, you care to have the closing remarks on this bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And thank you to my colleague from Baragada. He's spot on point with regards to not everybody's happy. Because that 45-day timeframe was not liked by either one, but it's, you know, better than a stick in the eye, I think our former colleague Senator Bob Glitsky would say. We try to do things as best we can in a cooperative way. I too want to thank all the parties again who have played a fundamental role in making this work. My staff have been working diligently on this. Mr. Clark and Mr. Tarpley are absolutely great advocates for their constituents, respectively. And the contractors, I think the developers, the real estate owners are all ultimately going to be a lot better off as a result of this. Because I think there will be a lot less contentious lawsuits and there will be a lot less confusion about how things happen because of the notice requirements that are put in this bill consistent with other notice requirements in other jurisdictions. And I want to thank everyone for all of the work that they've done. And again, this has been whittled down to a very basic, but very workable thing. When we go through the initial stages of this law, once it's in effect, then we will be able to see and tweak where those fine points have to be tweaked. And I think we're all open to that. And that's ultimately why we're here, Mr. Speaker, is to make corrections and improve the system by which not just our government works, but the private sector as well. So it's Mrs. Marci for the opportunity to close on the bill. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particularly very important bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tenorio. Are there any objections to moving Bill 297 AC to third reading file for voting today? There are no objection? Sure can.
Mr. Speaker, this is a day that will go down in our history books. It is a really, a great opportunity to see true bipartisanship from two individuals who have pretty much been opposed to a lot of things together. And so I move on that note for Senator Panglinen to be the second co-sponsor on this bill.
Any objection?
No, but I do want to extend my gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Speaker?
Senator Respechio, you're recognized on the Panglinen.
Well, I move that we take a one-minute recess so members can regain the...
Mr. Speaker.
Can catch their breath and regain their composure.
Composure. Thank you very much for that advice. Senator Calvo, you're...
Mr. Speaker, I would recommend that the author of the bill, just to shock the whole world, if the third sponsor could be Eddie Calvo. Because that would be Ben Panglinen and Eddie Calvo.
Is there, well, the speaker would like to, if there's no objection, then so ordered.
I'd like to amend my amendment to add Senator Eddie Calvo as the third co-sponsor.
Thank you. There are no objections. Before I move on, is there anybody else that has a feel-good feeling towards being a co-sponsor? There you go. There you go. Thank you very much. There being no objection to moving this to third fight, so ordered. Okay, thank you very much. Come down now. I want to get back to, if I understand correctly, earlier, we went ahead with Senator Tenorio's bill because we were waiting for some of the other senators to go and vote on Bill 327. Senator Respechio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding House rules, I move that we proceed to the voting file to dispose of Bill 327.
Okay, there are no objection?
Is the other bill ready? Has it been engrossed? So Bill, if we could just do both bills, whatever's in the third reading file.
We'll take one-minute recess.
Not the initiative? No, the initiative, they went back to committee. It's Bill 327 and Bill 378. They've both been engrossed. Then just Bill 327, Mr. Speaker.
There's no objection to bring up on Senator Respechio's motion. Clerks, can we have the engrossed bill? Does everybody have a copy of the engrossed bill? Sergeant Aram, can we see if any of the other senators that are in the other galleries to please come in? Thank you, Senator Guthers. They're calling her. Okay, the legislature's back in session. We're now in third reading file to vote on Bill 327. Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Bill number 327 LS is amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthers, DPA, R. J. Respechio, an act to amend U.S. Section 63133 to Chapter 63 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to indigenous fishing rights.
Thank you. Roll call.
Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldón?
Yes.
Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthers?
Ungan.
Senator Shizaki? Senator Luhan?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Pass.
Speaker Panglinen? Senator Respechio? Senator Shimisuk?
Ungan.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Speaker Wampat? Senator Palacios?
Bill number 327 LS, 13 As, zero NAs, zero abstains. Roll call, two absent. Bill 327 LS is passed. Both excused. One excused. 327 LS is duly passed. Thank you. We're going to have a one-minute recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator Respechio, you're recognized. And Sergeant Aram, can we get the rest of the senators in? Senator Respechio, do we have a copy of the letter you're going to read?
I think so.
Okay, can we get a copy of that, please?
Mr. Speaker?
Legislature's back in session. Again, you're recognized, Senator Respechio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This morning, we received a bill from the governor that would authorize the government of Guam to secure the financing needed to meet a consent decree mandate to deposit $20 million to trustee designated by the receiver, GGB Incorporated, by January 5, 2009. I introduced that bill as the chairman of the Committee on Calendar. And subsequent to that, I wrote Speaker Wampat a letter requesting for an emergency certification of Bill 383. And so this letter has been presented to her. And at this time, I would like to ask you, Mr. Speaker, if you're willing to declare this an emergency and to waive the public hearing requirement.
Thank you, Senator Respechio. After careful evaluation of the request to waive the requirements of public hearing on Bill 383, by request of the Governor of Guam in accordance with the Organic Act, an act to amend 5GCA subsection 1512.1 relative to authorization to issue bonds and bond anticipation notes for deficit financing, I certify pursuant to 2 Guam Code Annotated, subsection 2103, that an emergency condition exists and that the requirements for a public hearing on Bill 383 LS is accordingly waived. Senator Respechio?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Having declared the emergency, I then moved to place Bill Number 383 on the top of the second reading file, notwithstanding the House rules.
Any objection? No objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Because it's an appropriation measure, I move pursuant to the standing rules that we resolve in the Committee of the Hall for purposes of hearing Bill 383 and for inviting the administration officials so we can begin discussion on the governor's proposal.
So ordered. The legislature is now in the Committee of the Hall. Can we get our guest to come in? Sergeant Aram's? And we're all set up for the Committee of the Hall.
You know, Bertha, you said finally we have someone who understands the finances.
Okay, the Committee of the Hall is back in order. We are now in Committee of the Hall, entertaining Bill Number 383 LS. And this was, again, at the request of Imagedlahin Guam in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. And with that, I'd like to introduce and welcome again our BBMR Director, Mr. Bertha Duñez. Good afternoon. And Mr. Tony Blas, Begetka Administrator. Good afternoon. And again, before we allow for comments or questions from members of the body, I will allow members of the administration, if you have any opening statements that you would like to convey to the members of the body. Mr. Blas, or excuse me, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Senator. And also, we have Tina Garcia, the Deputy Administrator of GITA. And of course, Rita Alta, the Business Manager. And of course, Aunt Ned Leon Guerrero. She's a public finance staff. Again, we'd like to thank you, Senator. Of course, for all of us, the Governor Commissar transmitted the proposed legislation to fund the $20 million the Governor of Guam is required to deposit to a shaship designated by the receiver, Gershon Brechner and Bratton, approved by the legislature and the court in the consent decree as requested by the legislature in our meeting on November 5. And the legislature proposes to reprogram $20 million for the deficit financing bond authorized in 5GCA 1512.21. And all the legislation is outlined in this, done by, transferred to the speaker by the governor. And of course, and for all of us, we need to give you a little market update that we did yesterday. Given the financial crisis that, of course, is shaking the nations and the global marketplace, we need to keep in constant communication with our entire financial team on the pending deficit financing. Just yesterday, November 18, the financial team held a phone conference to discuss the status of the position official statement as well as the potential schedule to get a portion of the bonds priced and closed before the end of the year due to the recent developments in the market as reported by the members of the financial team that are keeping their desks on high alert. Of course, I need to preface that with the market situation as it stands now, developments will happen literally at a moment's notice. literally at a moment's notice. Things have changed significantly over the course of the several days. Last week, Guam Bond Order made an unsuccessful attempt to sell up those, some of their bonds. And as of yesterday, although the market continues to improve, it is not improved enough to finance the full authorized amount of 246 million. Citicor, the lead underwriter, is confident that the market may be available to fund our immediate needs for the $20 million solid waste issue within the eight percent, authorized eight percent rate, but with shorter financing terms, 40 million for 10 to 12 years, and 2018 or 2020 for the 60 to 75 million dollars for 15 years. The full 246 was expected to be amortized as a level debt service over a 30-year period. With the market possibly only to, only having the buyers at or below the eight percent level in the early maturities, it may only be possible to market a portion of the full authorization, authorization. While the later maturities would be available for financing as market conditions improve, the earlier years would already have been filled with the bonds through this partial sale. This means the eight percent maximum interest would only be achieved while setting longer maturing bonds that typically have a higher interest rate than early maturities. And market improvement would be required to sell the remaining authorization. So we also discussed if a short-term bond anticipation note or the band financing would be possible in the current market as a way to bridge a more permanent financing when markets improve. However, the short-term market for non-investment grade is more of a challenge than the long-term market. And Citicor will continue to monitor this option and get back to our own team here. In an effort to explore interest with financial institutions, Gida issued a solicitation of interest which will expire on November 20th at 4:00 P. M. We are hopeful for favorable response. And we are awaiting the results of the solicitation of interest to gauge more whether some financing institutions like banks also might be, might be interested in this $20 million note. And so to better assess whether we should proceed with any bond financing as described, or move forward with the RFP process. And we, of course, we need legislative authorization. Should the SOA be unsuccessful for planning purposes that will afford Guam's flexibility, preliminary bond financing schedule will have to happen when this situation will happen. So all of us, Mr. Chairman and members of the legislature, as you're aware, I can't emphasize that enough that the current volatility of the market, and not to mention our neighbor, Japan, and a primary visitor market facing another critical economic crisis that further impacts the global economy. Guam is definitely impacted by the global economy situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. If there's no other comments from the members of the panel, I'll be looking towards members and colleagues in the body. Senator Tenorio.
I don't want to immediately go into questions right now. Just I want to make sure for the record, it's reflected that they're consistent with the existing law. All the panel member have already been sworn in by the Sergeant Adams?
Yes, yes.
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
Okay. And again, I will be looking towards the body for any questions or comments in regards to the bill. Vice Speaker Shimizu.
Yeah, first of all, thank you again. You know, try to make me understand. Right now, the way the market is going, I mean, I watch as much as I can on CNN, the bailout of the big three, and now Citibank also is looking at one of the largest layoffs in the nation's history. And this is the same, are that same companies that we're dealing with and getting the advice from? I just want to get some starter questions, you know? It is, right?
You're talking about Citicor, the bond?
Yeah, is that the same company as this?
Yeah, well, Citicor, yeah.
We did speak to those underwriters, and the layoffs that they announced recently had actually occurred, started to occur two months back. And, and so the group that we're dealing with now is, is not going to be affected by this layoff as far as they know.
We spoke to the local Citibank, Citicor thing, Ma, Ma, I can't say the word. He's a local head of here.
The corporate officer for Citibank.
You know, there's, I guess they're doing some streamline, you know, for more efficient, I guess, for the efficient company here. Ma, Ma, the country business manager for Citibank. They, yeah, they, yeah, he's the local. He told us that there are, we asked about the 53,000 loss of jobs. I guess they're doing their streamlining, their own, a more efficient situation for their different companies, so.
I just wanted to know what, it's not so much what their reasons are, but this are the, one of the players that we're talking about. That's basically all I wanted to know. And to be able to see how does that impact in terms of them providing us guidance as to where the stock market when they themselves have really been hit hard. That's the largest. Now, again, another questions in my mind in terms of trying to lay the foundation to make it clear to me is this, we had passed for a number of times, what's that, legislation that dealt with floating bonds, I remembered earlier. One of them was the $92 million for the COLA, the retirees. That was way back when, way back before this financial crisis occurred. And the governor didn't move on that at the time when the market was still good. Am I correct? I want to try to lay a foundation for some historical perspective.
Ms. Duñez would like to respond. Ms. Duñez.
I'm, the Senator, the original authorization was in public law 2919, which was the fiscal year 2008 budget. But back in June 2007, when we were under credit watch with standard of pores, one of the, one of the conditions for going out to the market on that particular bond was number one, that we get off credit watch, which happened in the summer of 2007. And secondly, that we, that we adopt a deficit elimination plan to accompany that particular initiative. And the deficit elimination plan was transmitted with the revised 2007, I mean, the revised 2008 budget in the summer. And of course, it didn't see the light of day. So there was no deficit elimination plan in order for us to proceed with, at that, at that time.
Okay, so the deficit elimination plan was increasing taxes. That's basically the plan was increasing taxes, increasing fees. And, and it was deliberated here, and I think the body rejected it. So it did get the light of time and opportunity, but as a deliberative body, at that time, if I understand correctly, they said, no.
That's correct.
And I remember, my, my, my draw was that not, I didn't agree with that because I felt, and this is me speaking, at that time, that we had some receivable taxes to be collected versus that of, of raising taxes. So that's the policy of the group collectively.
That was the policy.
Right. And, and, and that's, you know, democracy, the way it works. And so then it was never acted on and never, not even tested markets. I was always being assured that it was going to, to happen. And it was going to happen, and it never did. And then, if I remembered correctly, we also then came back and had another legislation that authorized the same thing, but with the addition, again, of the income tax. Okay? To be able to get the income tax to be paid. So now, we have an authorization on the books right now for 246. But then I remembered, there was no market to take this to. In the earlier days that I've listened, and I started learning a little bit about what was happening, then there, there is no market to take any amount. Now, am I, am I to, of course, like we all watch, things are moving sometimes very rapidly and changing very quickly. It's really, people are a little bit more optimistic. But at the same time, we're looking at the big three auto companies that are, you know, looking for bailouts there. And that's going to affect, have a rippling effect on, on, on the nation's economy. So this bill that's being presented by the governor is saying that at least he wants to, to go to the, to market and float only the $20 million because it's in the expertise opinion that that's all that we can get. I mean, what about maybe, why only the $20 million? You know, because if I remember the discussion with the governor, he wanted some flexibility to be able to transfer among the different authorizations today. Now, am I correct that all he's asking today is just for the $20 million and forget all the other, we don't even want to try to make parts of that, or like what he had mentioned earlier, to put it through, and he has the ability to, to take, here and here, to come up with the $20 million? Or is it such that we could probably come up with an additional $20 million? So that, you know, you all know where I stand when it comes to the COLA. It's, it's really a life and death and a moral obligation, because people are literally dying. Absolutely, they are dying. And I want to be able to see what we can do. I mean, for that group of people that are vulnerable, they're the most vulnerable of our society who lives on fixed income after having retired maybe 30, 40 years ago, and having a very, very hard time. And they have a hard time having to choose whether to continue health insurance and not take it because it's too expensive versus that of paying their mortgage or paying for their... And I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, why do we only focus on just that $20 million and not also? Because from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are some senators that hear longer than me, that that's also a judgment, a legal judgment that we must pay. Am I correct now that all we're asking for, for what this bill is asking, just only the $20 million, not the full amount where he can, you know, take portions, give the governor the authority to be able? Because that's what I thought I heard when I happened to be down at the governor's office to, to ask about, please open the water for game for animals. They're creatures of God. But I just happened to be there for that purpose. And they said, oh, yeah, sit down, Senator Shimizu, because we want to talk about this. And am I, am I wrong there, that what I heard then and what is being proposed now in, that they were going to go for the 246 and authorize the governor to be able to have that flexibility to? That's what I understood. Now, you know, I may have senior moments, but I don't think so, not on this one. Because I wanted, and I made it very clear with the governor, that my also concern is that $92 million. And my good chairman, we talked about this, we had the 14 million ahead. And then, with the understanding, I got the full support of this body that, to set that policy. So is this going to be different and apart from that authorization, that public law, this is going to be another authorization on top of the 246?
Yeah. Senator, I need to reiterate again, one more time, that the governor, when he sent this, when he transmitted this legislation, they, they wanted to provide it to, a number of alternatives to take care of the $20 million. But the $20 million is a component of the 246. So, you know, you can take care of the 246. I guess he's, the government's requesting that we get reprogrammed the $20 million out of the deficit financing bond issue. And, and that's one alternative. The other alternative is that will authorize the government to, to acquire a $20 million loan. So all of this is required legislative approval. So it's the members of the body should come together and, and.
Yeah, I know, I agree. That's where we're here. But I'm laying the foundation so people will understand that that was my understanding at the time.
Yeah.
That was my understanding at the time.
We want to take care of the 246.
But is it in your professional, and all your, you went to San Francisco, you know, you guys parlayed with the, the experts, and you got your, your, your ratings and all of that stuff and all those things. Again, is, first of all, given the amount of time that the governor needs, besides, it's not only the governor that needs, there, needs to get this, we have to get somebody else's approval, not the courts, but the receiver. He has to approve this, this elected body. We have to go to him and say, this is what... And, and so I don't know if this is what was already looked at and said, yes, this is going to get the, the receiver to approve this. I mean, I don't know. But my understanding, Senator Blas, was that. And then when I read this, I said, this is not what I understood earlier. But if this is another option on that, then maybe in part, if I have to be reasonably thinking, is that 246 is just not going to fly. Am I correct? But 20 million is going to fly?
What, we've been tracking the market daily to try and get the entire 246 done. And because we want to get the entire amount done, we, what's being proposed here is, in order to meet the mandate to make a deposit of the 20 mil, we reprogram a portion of the, of the 246 to take care of that and to be reimbursed with a revenue bond at a later time. If we could do the 246 today, that is our desire. But as we've told you in our briefings last week, the market for non-investment grade bonds is not available to us. What we've learned in the past day is that they can possibly sell up to 100 million, but not the 246, meaning they are speaking to the different investors, and there's a little bit of appetite coming back, but they cannot today sell 246. But there are risks if we sell the 100 mil. As we said, the, the risk of selling the 100 mil now is that those investors want short-term notes at eight percent and, and within the next 10 to 15 years. And if they're only willing to buy.
Is that also the same with the 20 million?
And that would be.
Is that the same, it would apply to this 20 million? The same rules of engagement applies to the 20 million?
Yes.
And, and, pardon me for interrupting before I lose my train of thought.
Yes, yes.
If the rules of engagement will apply to the $20 million, all that you said, eight percent interest, you know, all the other things that they want. And you, and there's a potential, some possibility that that could also apply to 100 million.
Yes.
Not the 246. Maybe I'm coming from, from this perspective, you know, that half a loaf is better than no loaf at all.
Okay.
And, and I'm coming from that perspective that, you know, if, if there's 20 million and I got 80 million that, that would be able to be spread out, let's say, to, to pay the COLA, that's 80 million of 92. Pardon my selfishness to always think about that, but that's one class, that, that's one group that is no spring chicken.
Right.
These are your grandmothers and your great-grandmothers, probably. These are your grandmothers and your great-grandmothers probably. So if you can go up to the 100 million, there's 80 million there that can take care and maybe those with the higher COLA don't have to get it. Those that are getting maybe less, I don't know, what's the lowest, I don't know what it is, but whatever that lowest level, then you might want to, you know, the governor might want to, to look and sit in, 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 in a position of saying, what would Solomon do? To make a Solomon decision on that, so that we just only, don't only focus on just this 20 million dollars for just, to, to, for, just for the, the landfill and forget also, I cannot, I cannot do that. So I'm, I'm always here trying to say, I look to your expertise. If you can, if you can get the 20 million dollars at those rules of engagements and you're saying to me that we may be able to get 100 million at the same rules of engagements, I'm trying to go to your consciousness, your moral compass.
Before we make that decision, there's one more caveat to that 100 million. It, it could, because all your, your, your near-term notes are being sold, we're, we're trying to sell the 30-year bond. Because you're selling all your near-term notes of 15, of up to 15 years at an 8% interest rate, the likelihood of selling the, the notes from the 15 to 30 years will, will more than likely not hit the 8% threshold and because longer-term notes usually demand a higher interest rate. And so, they're saying we could do it, but there's a possibility that we may not be able to secure the entire amount.
That's for the 246?
For, for the remain, if we do the 100 now, we will, we will have a very difficult time of getting the remaining 146.
But let me ask this question, okay? Before I lose my train of thought on that, you gotta remember, you're gonna educate me. I represent JQ Public, I'm not at the, I'm not the financial tech. I have to be able to ask the kinds of que... Now, if, for example, you have on the same rules of, or the terms and conditions, I call it rules of engagement up to 100 million dollars and you go on a short term, what, 15 years you're asking here?
Yes.
And so forth. You know, is, is this something that I've heard that we can always refinance again, so that we can get a lower raise? Oh, and, because it comes before this body, I say, oh, guess what, we can go out and, and refinance that because we can get it at a lower interest because the market now is, is that still?
You would be, you wouldn't be able to do it for at least 10 years.
Well, you know, but that's what we've been doing anyway, on, on some of the life of those that came back in here to refinance, they were, some of them are getting so close.
Um, but, but what we're saying is that overall, we may not be able to sell the entire amount and, and so...
So what could you sell? Besides, only for Letjon, only for GBB, what else can you sell? To be able to, 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 to take into consideration what we have passed in terms of the tax refunds, the EITC, the, the COLA, what are those? You know, I mean, how, how many more can we put on this canoe before it, we can't put any further? You, you see what I'm saying? The governor's coming to us only for this. And I, and I'm always saying, wherever I can, until January 4th, well, you won't hear my voice in this body. I will continue to raise that, and I do raise it with the governor on a personal basis, that if, if we got it up to 40 million, so three qua, I mean, one quarter of a bread can keep people alive. You know, I mean, even the water, the... Is that, is, is this it? If you know, is this it? No, I want to know, is there worlds of possibilities? Because again, you know, that was the road we were going, I was going down. When we met there, you guys weren't there, I think you were there. You know, he's the governor. I have to take his word and I have to also provide in my sense of urgency and importance, when we go out to market, to market, to market. I mean, I'm gonna continue to be that voice. And I know my colleague to my left also echoed those. Is there any elasticity to increase this?
Senator, I wanna, I need to reiterate one more time. We're hopeful that the market will happen and, and this is one option that the governor outlined. And we, I wish, when the market happens, we can take, we can take care of the 20 minute and the two, and the two, the, you know, 226 million dollars to take care of that one alternative, right? And so, for us, we're pushing and pushing and, 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 in fact, very soon, we're working, working with our, our, our underwriters and we need to, to, to go on a roadshow to, to, pursue a direct contact with investors who are interested in, in pushing, pushing this, this, this deficit financing issue. So, we're pushing for that and that's, so this is one alternative. The other alternative that the governor sent was this, the, to acquire a 20 million dollar loan. Again, all of this requires legislative approval, the, and terms and conditions, so it'd be a good opportunity for us to, to, to acquire this, this 20 million dollar thing. Now, there's, 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 I guess the court requires that we have to deposit 20 million dollars before January, or on or before January 5th, I think, so...
Is, is that enough time for you to go out and be able to work this 20 million dollars?
That's why we're here.
No, I said, do you think you have the time? I mean, given that it's approved today or tomorrow, whenever, in, in your, your expertise on, on past... I mean, I, I don't know what it is, I, I would just assume based on, on, on one's experience. But that's, yeah, you do your best, I know Tony, I know you absolutely do your best. And, and I too, it's not so much that you have to re-explain it to me, I too already have taken the position that what I heard earlier is not what is being submitted here today. Of course, then the governor may have changed his mind or changed his policy and so forth. I'm just asking that, when, when we do this and, and even if another 20 million can be taken care of, you know, I mean, for, for some of these folks, even at the lowest of, and even at the, at the oldest of, you know, something do, that must be taken care of, or we're just all looking at this because this is a court order that we must do. Well, you know, there's, there's also a court order with the COLA, you know, settlement to, to do it. And I don't see no sense of urgency from, quite frankly, from this administration. You know, in two years, I've been saying this over and over and over. Two years has come, my good chair, he knows that. He, he and I worked on, on, on this COLA issue trying to at least get 14 million, he got through. And it'd be nice if another 14 million, giving it to the, the lowest of the lowest. You know, to even pay, I mean, they're just living, you know, on a very tight, tight budget. You know, and, and, and I, I, I don't see that sense of, of, of putting something in there. I, I just don't, I just don't. But you know, we're in a tight financial situation, the market in and of itself. And, I don't know, we'll, we'll, we'll see. I'll end for now, but I would still like to reserve the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to, to come back and ask a little bit more specific questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Speaker. Senator B.J. Cruz?
Just one quick follow-up on, on that, on one of the last questions that the Vice Speaker was asking of Mr. Blas about the timeframe. I attended the Bond 101 class that you conducted. At, I'm trying to remember now, is it, that day did you announce that you guys changed your name back to Gida or, or are you still Gedka? Oh, well, you're back to Gida, okay. Well, anyway, in, in the Bond 101 class, did I not understand Ali saying that at the very least, it would take three months to move from, from the day that we decide we're going to approve this to, to the day that we'll get money?
We're talking about the, you're talking about the new revenue bond issue?
Well, any, any revenue bond to move it through would, would take at least three months at the very least.
Yes.
That's what I recall, because I even made her repeat it once so that the press would hear it.
Yeah, see, for all of us, we're doing our part here and, Senator, and in fact, we're providing all the information, we're, we did all our part. All the, all the requirements to pursue...
I, I understand that, I'm not faulting you. I'm just trying to get everybody to understand and the viewing public and even my, the other members here who did not attend the Bond 101 class, that it was the, the information that was provided to us by Ms. Lim Tiako was that even under the best of times, it would take three months from the date that we signed the go-ahead on a, on a bond to the date that it's, it, it, that you get any money. And I made her repeat that because, and I, all of you laughed at me because I wanted the PDN reporter to hear that because I just wanted it clear to the public that it is impossible for us, even if this were the, the days of, the bull days of, of Wall Street. It's not, it's not going to, it wouldn't happen in less than, than 90 days. And this insistence that we're going to meet some January 5th deadline or some December 5th deadline is, is, you know, is not possible. I just want that clear.
Yes, also, Senator, I agree with you. And also we provide information to GBB to tell him about the, the market conditions. And, and I know that Dave Manning says he's aware of that and they, they're aware of the market, so this is a, this is a problem for, for us to, to take care of this issue being resolved before the January 5th deposit. And so, that's why the governor sent another alternative here, the, the line of credit or a loan.
Okay, thank you, Senator Cruz. Senator, the Senator from Baragada, I, I need to make an amendment and I'm wondering, you might as well warm up the seat if you could chair for me temporarily as I make an amendment since you will be Ways and Means Chair in the future. Oh, okay, okay, but then after that, if I, if I could please ask you up here. Senator Pangalinen from Baragada.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Blas, you mentioned that the governor has another proposal. Where is that proposal?
It says your, this, we, we sent the, the, the legislation that was transmitted to, to the speaker and then in the alternative...
Where, where is that alternative? Is it in the, in the bill?
In, in the bill. The, you know, we, we sent this bill 383.
Yes.
The reprogram. And then, and then...
Where's the other option?
I'm sorry, to reprogram the 246 bond.
Okay.
And the other option was the bond anticipation note, if we couldn't go out on the 246 today with the market conditions.
And the bond anticipation note is located on page what?
I'm sorry, the pages aren't numbered, but it's actually on the others, the second page.
The second page?
It actually starts on the first page where it says authorization of issuance of bonds and notes. And then where the underline, it's, is the authorization for the bond anticipation note and then it follows the terms and conditions and et cetera, related to the, the ban. So that's just the 20 million by itself.
So, so the first part of the, of the bill is the bond anticipation note?
Correct, sir.
And where is the reprogramming provision? How do you differentiate between the two?
The reprogram is, actually starts on subsection I. I apologize again to the...
Right, subsection I of the second, third to the last page, fourth?
Correct.
Right?
Correct. And then the language is in the under, underline and then J talks about
Yes.
the use of the proceeds.
So these are the two options?
Correct, sir.
And why? What is the underlying security for both? Is there a difference?
No, I think it's, no, I think it's, I think the repayment is general fund. I don't know if there was a security in this.
So they're both under the bond anticipation note and the, and the reprogramming, they're both general bond obligations?
Correct, sir.
All right. The terms of the bond anticipation note is a maturity of five years, correct? No later than five years? Okay. Why does the governor want to reprogram the proceeds of the bond if he has this bond anticipation note?
He won't exercise that if he gets the bond anticipation note. It was, I guess, an alternative in case the 246 was not viable because of market conditions. This was actually recommended by the financial advisors. Their, their best recommendation was to use the 246 and to reprogram that. That was actually what they recommended. But we also had asked if we could, if we can't go out on the market, can we also look at what we could do here in, on Guam? And so what we're doing as well is, Gida had issued a solicitation of interest to see if anybody out there on the island could lend us the 20 million dollars. And I understand two financial institutions responded.
So far, two, so, and, and that, I guess the deadline will happen at 4:00 PM tomorrow?
So it's just an, it's just an option if the 246 is not, it's not feasible to do the 246 at this time.
Okay. So, but, my understanding is that in the reprogramming that's being proposed here, it really isn't a reprogramming. That it is an authorization, maybe I'll just ask a question rather than make a statement. Under the reprogramming provision that you guys proposed to be a reprogramming provision, the way I identify reprogramming is that you would issue the bonds and from the proceeds of the bonds that are issued, you would reprogram up to 20 million dollars. That's what was represented to us in the request by the governor. The bill here, does it allow the governor to issue bonds in less, with, for less than the bonds authorized?
So we're, what we're proposing, we're, we're asking here is to issue notes?
Not the notes, I'm not talking about the bond anticipation notes. I'm talking about, you're saying that there's, there are two different authorizations here. One is the bond anticipation note completely and separate from the bond issue. And there's the second option of issuing the, reprogramming the bonds. But my question is, in the change that you're making to allow him to reprogramming the bonds, does it allow him to issue bonds for less than the amounts authorized and only to the amount that he wishes? In this case... In this case, twenty million dollars?
The, the ban allows us, is, is to allow the twenty...
Not the ban, not, not the ban.
And then, under section I, uh, use of proceeds from the sale of bonds, um, on subsection I, it says, "To the extent that such, such expenses have not already been paid using proceeds of notes issued, then we will pay the general fund expenses..."
So they're really not two separate authorizations? One is tied to the other?
Right.
And...
The, the note will be reimbursed when the bond is issued? Or, or, no, this bond?
Again, my question is, you're telling me that the bill, as drafted?
Right.
Allows him to go out for a ban?
Right.
To the tune of twenty million dollars? Separate, period. The other section of the bill, you're telling me, allows him to reprogramming the bonds, the pro- the bonds, or just to reprogram the authorization? There's a, that's what I'm trying to differentiate between, the governor said he wanted to reprogram the bond authorization.
Right.
My question is, in what you have submitted to us, if we allow him, in how he submitted this bill, and how it's written, to reprogramming the bond authorization, does it allow him to only issue bonds now? Not ban and dis- not bans? Up to only twenty million, and not issue any amount beyond that?
That's not the intent. The intent was, if we, if we would do the two forty-six?
Right.
Then we would use a portion of that to pay the twenty mil note.
I understand.
And then the, the, uh, the rest would be, um...
Flow through the authorization according to the priorities.
Correct.
If that's the way it is, then, and, and that's my understanding.
Yes.
I think this doesn't do that, and is not as clear.
Okay.
And so, what I would like to do, Mr. S- Mr. Chair, is make an amendment, which I have prepared, um, and it would basically just add, at the end of subsection I, removing all references under subsection I to bans and bonds, and so, to the bans and the proceeds, and it would just say that upon the issuance of the bonds herein authorized, which is two forty-six, the governor is authorized to reprogram, as a first priority, up to twenty million of the proceeds for each of the priorities set forth in this bond, upon the issuance of the bond, to pay the cost of the new landfill, provided that the governor shall not use more than seven million of the amount authorized for COLA, shall not use more than seven million of the amount prioritized for the payment of the refunds, and further provided that the proceeds of the first revenue bonds and other obligations issued by the government to finance the cost of the new landfill shall be reimbursed to the general fund, whereupon such reimbursement account shall be used to pay the general fund expenses listed in paragraphs one through four of this section, upsection, in the amounts not exceeding the amounts therein provided.
Again, that's a fair...
And, and I'll just get some copies...
Fairly lengthy amendment, so we can have copies, uh, provided to the members of the body, as well as to representative administration. I'm gonna take a couple of minutes recess to get the amendment passed out.
And then, yeah, that would be to just add that, and then remove all authorizations for bans, and, and no, and references to notes in the bill, and will resolve the issue of the twenty million in bill three seventy-seven.
He doesn't have to, because it's an option, yes. I agree. That's true. He doesn't have to. Okay. Because it's supposed to be separate, you're either supposed to do the ban, or do the two forty-six. So the... Will you have your amendment? Do I, what is it? On this one? This one, it doesn't mention the compact. And this is gonna land out?
So?
This amendment is going to just ensure that the twenty million that will be taken from the proceeds should be, should be flowed apart, okay? And then he's saying to remove all references of the ban in this bill, because he wants to treat it separately. And then he wants three seventy-seven, which pledges compact impact line for the repayment. That's what he said.
Yeah.
So, so you guys need to process that, and what's the position? So... So this, this is the compact, could it be, right here? Okay. Is this an amendment? But Tina said she wants to run a stand. You wanna run a stand? So this is his majesty? Oh, yeah. She, she recommends so. Nine o'clock? When? Oh, you're gonna email it tonight?
Okay, we are now in the Pangolinen amendment. Uh, again, thank you, Senator, Senator Pangolinen. I do know that representatives of the administration would like to comment on this particular amendment. Shannon, if you'd care to speak to the Senator and the body?
Senator, thank you for the proposed amendment. Um, this, you know, legislation was drafted with the bond council and Gida, and so I think it is the recommendation of the panel, if it's all right with you and the body, that we run this amendment by our bond council, just to make sure that it's consistent with everything else he had in mind when he drafted it.
That's fine with me.
Okay. And so Senator Pangolinen, as well as members of the body, to allow them the, the time, and looking again, we are close to five, if there is no objection, I'd like to recess the committee of the hall and reconvene at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. If there's no objection, okay. We'll recess until nine o'clock tomorrow morning.